...like a dog for, since last fall.
As have you, Mary. And council, thanks for having me. So I'm filler again, huh, Mary? Just fill in some time. I can fill about an hour if you've got it, as you probably know. Does everyone here have a copy of the schedule of events? I had some made up at, you should have there.
And here's one for you, Carl.
If not, you've got just two. Oh, Chip, you've got mine.
This is the agenda for Monday. And it may be tweaked a little, but it's pretty, it's pretty much the way it'll be. A few typos, but that's because you can't read my writing.
Okay. Did you want me to read this one, per se? Okay. Well, being you've all got or should have or have access to a schedule of events, I won't go through every one. You can also find a very updated one. And when I say updated, as Mary knows, sometimes we change it three times, maybe in a week. So if you go to brainardhistoryweek.com, you can find everything about Brainard History Week, especially about their railroad days on Tuesday out there. And there'd be a clickable link there where you can find the very most updated links. So if I change even one little time or anything, I send it out to Amy out there and she'll change it immediately. So as Mary can attest, when we first started this, clear before the first of the year, talking about our Brainard History Week, we thought about what do we really want to do here besides just talk history? And can anybody kind of think of when it is they got interested in history? Maybe you're not yet, but isn't it a shame that we don't start thinking about history until we're almost historical ourselves? I know myself, I was almost eight years old before I started hauling home rusty relics, as my wife calls it. But, so we thought, why not see if we can try to get some of the kids involved, you know, at an early age? And so we've done some things like our Buffalo Hills Trail that Mark Spear headed. And we put those along the river and along historic sites. So now we've kind of got historic locations combined with walking. We thought that was a natural. So when we did Brainard History Week, we thought, let's involve the kids. So I'm just going to do a few bullet points and pick things out day by day. And you tell me if we didn't try to include the kids in here. Monday, as Mary has on her sheet, I think you have a copy of that, that's kind of our official day. And we'll be talking about the building that we're in here today, turning 100 years old, and the fire hall and whatnot. So we thought, how can we get the kids involved? When we go around the corner and at 1:00 and have a photo shoot of anyone that worked out of that fire hall building, Fire Department, as you know, they always do a really good job of involving the kids. They'll probably have McGruff there and they'll have the big flag, you know, on the hook and ladder and that kind of thing. So that will involve the kids a little bit. On Tuesday, the whole thing is going to be a railroad event. And out there, what kid doesn't like looking at the old railroad artifacts and whatnot? They're going to build a tour of the old clock tower and what I call the Brick Barn, which is actually the old blacksmith shop from the 1880s. And they're actually restoring part of that and going to use it as a new event space. And then Wednesday is really for the kids. We're having a teddy bear parade. And I call it the parade that the kiddies don't just watch, they are the parade. So as you're going through this schedule, and anyone else out there that runs across this schedule, do think of the kids and bring them along and try to get them involved in history, in their local history. And Thursday, once again, the kids are going to have a really good time because it's going to be at the Crowning County Fairgrounds. And Pam couldn't be here tonight, but she did ask me to mention that there's two things that are going to be really fun. And one is going to be the restored Carbine House. That is an old log cabin and that's been fully restored. So we'll have a ribbon cutting on that. And something that just came up, and maybe, maybe even you haven't heard about this, Mary, but she's got an actress coming up from the cities and she's going to play Mary Tornstrom. So she's going to be like a teacher out there in the old school building. So that'll be fun for the kids. Downtown Day on Friday, and that too will involve some things. We're going to actually walk that Buffalo Hills Trail, at least part of it. We're going to find those four new markers. And at the end of that two-block walk, we're actually going to have a bird watching tour that goes around the backside of Boom Lake. So I think the kids will enjoy that. And of course, Gregory Park Day is on Saturday. And that's going to be all for the kids because we're going to recreate the games that people like myself played back in the 1950s and 1960s that were put on by Parks and Rec. And we're even going to have a petting zoo there by Safari North. So that's pretty much it. So I think you'll all agree that we have plenty of things for the kids, so bring them on along. Anything else I missed there, Mary, or any questions from anyone?
Of course, it's kids of all ages. Right up to 100.
Right up to big kids, that's right.
I have a question.
Sure.
And I guess this would go on for years. What is the attire that is expected of elected officials, staff, and everything else when you have these events? You know, I know the mayor always dresses up very well as in he can pick them up, but I'm looking at, let's say, the fire chief, the police chief. Should they be in uniform or can they come without a uniform and people have to guess who they are?
I guess I kind of think uniforms are always good.
Okay.
For those that, you know, like the fire chief and that kind of thing. Now, at our event at the railroad, we're told that the attire out there is anything from black tie to old railroad gear that you might have been wearing in 1914. I'm currently looking for something like that myself. But that's a good question. Maybe, Mary, can you, do you have any thoughts on that? I'd say, you know, the sky is, the sky is the limit, you know, whatever you would think. It is going to be, you know, mid-June and it might be a little warm. So even the mayor might take his jacket off, I don't know.
Never know. So you're saying McGruff would be there then? Is that right?
I think he's going to be there, yeah.
Cool.
Okay, I can talk to the police chief, yeah.
What does it entail to have McGruff? I suppose you have to rent the costume, huh?
There's no costume.
No, we don't, we don't keep him here, probably. I'm hoping McGruff will be on hand.
And one thing that Carl hasn't mentioned, and I cannot understand why, because it's been the most difficult part of this planned celebration. We have spent more time on this one subject that I will quickly identify than probably all the rest of it put together. And as far as I know, as of this morning, when I talked to Carl, it was on. And that is the reconciliation program on a Wednesday afternoon. Wednesday morning is the teddy bear parade. Wednesday afternoon at 2:00, hopefully, the ceremony of reconciliation with Native Americans is still scheduled. It would take place in about the middle of the block between Laurel and Front on Fourth Street.
Correct.
Which was the site of the lynching of the two Native Americans in 1873?
Two.
1872. And they were hanged without trial. There's a book about it that you could get and read. It's rather interesting. A young girl had been abducted and they quickly had some reason to believe it was these two particular Indian men who had abducted her. And they were hauled in and put in jail. The judge had been telegraphed for, remember, there's no email or telephone. They had to telegraph St. Paul to get a judge. There were no judges here. And the judge was going to be coming within a day or two. In the interim, the Native Americans were locked up in jail. However, that night, an agitator from Duluth came down and apparently had got a group of people together. And they broke into the jail, took the two Native Americans out, and hanged them on that spot. So they were hanged without due process. And clearly, that's not the American way. So what we want to do with this reconciliation ceremony, and to do it, of course, we've had to work with the Native Americans, particularly the White Earth Tribe, because that was the tribe that these two then belonged to. It's been a long, torturous, and cumbersome process. We have changed the proposed wording on the plaque, I suppose, a half a dozen times.
Seventy-three.
And it appears we now have the wording agreeable. It's very simple, not much embellishment to it, just very plain, no names involved. We'll say two Native Americans, and we'll say a young woman or a young girl, won't give names. If it goes as planned, the Native American will be here. Their leader will, wants our mayor to stand beside her. It is a woman, their leader is a woman. And when the plaque, it will be sort of unsecreted, I guess is the word. They have a ceremony called the Wiping of the Tears. And following that, they have a ceremony called the Rubbing of the Sage, where they burn dried sage, and I believe it's rubbed on. A lot of interest in this ceremony. And hopefully, it will come about. Following that, there will be a tour of the Humphrey Center at CLC, which was in memory of the late John Humphrey. Great many artifacts of the Native Americans there. Then a reception, hopefully, will be held. And then hopefully, an exhibition, which I call a mini pow-wow, but it's...
Exhibition dance, they call it?
Yeah. And it'll be a small number of the Native Americans in the Native dress. That ought to be an absolutely awe-inspiring ceremony. And as I say, I think we spent more hours on that than all the rest put together. But if it happens, it's momentous, historical, and awesome for our community. And I hope all of you will be there, everyone, everyone, and participate. Because we need to hold out our hand to our neighbors. They are our neighbors. And they are part of our American family. And that's what we want to do. So I, at this point, it's still on. And I hope everyone, everyone, except Dave, who won't be here. But no unexcused absence.
I have, I have a note from Mary that says...
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
We're going to start our...
Thank you.
Thank you.
You betcha. Thanks for having me.
Carl, thank you.
I now call the City of Brainard City Council to order. I want to welcome all of those in EV land and those in the audience here. I hope you had a chance to weather the rain over the weekend. It seems like we're always talking about moisture of some sort, but where in Minnesota it can change from day to day, at least it's not ice. Okay, with that being said, we need to do roll call. Sheeler?
Here.
Orkinagin?
Here.
Coke?
Here.
Pritchett?
Here.
Matten?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Parks? My hesitation was the mayor.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We do have one, one agenda item that we have to add. This is the licenses that were supposed to be attached to your packet. So they were not attached somewhere. There was one page and there's two pages here that, that need to be added to that. So we need to add this. Is there any other additions or additions to the...
Mr. President?
Yes.
I need a clarification. Contingent upon inspection by the Fire Department, are they just automatic then, after the Fire Department, the second page of this, it just says up here, are we also renewing bills or are they coming back after the Fire Department looks at it? I just don't know.
They would be approved and you would approve them tonight to be the last time you'd see it. And then the Fire Marshal, Fire Department wouldn't do the inspection and they'd be done at that point.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call. Sheeler?
Here.
Orkinagin?
Yep.
Coke?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, move to approve, adopt the consent calendar. Second. Any other discussion? Okay. Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkinagin?
Here.
Coke?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Okay. We do have a call for applicants yet, the Cable TV Advisory Committee, which it sounds like we're going to be having a meeting sometime in the next month, perhaps.
Finally, yes.
So we need, we need another body for that position. And then a person for the Transportation Advisory Committee. Mr. Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move to approve the bills as presented.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call. Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkinagin?
Yep.
Coke?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Okay, now we have a presentation from Centerpoint Energy to the Fire Department. And the question was, who should he give the check to? I mean, there were a lot of people that were volunteering. To the chief or to you or to the mayor?
The mayor, always, mayor.
Mayor and the chief.
Mayor and the chief, that sounds good.
Okay, can I say?
Yes, yes, please.
I'm, hello, my name is Scott Hingey from Centerpoint Energy. And through the years, we've been involved with the Community Partnership Grant Program. And Brainard is one of our areas that we do service. And I have a check here for $250 that people are going to be using to purchase a multi-gas atmosphere monitor for the Fire Department. So I'd like to present a check for $250. Chief?
Thank you very much.
To you?
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
On behalf of the city and the Fire Department, we thank you very much.
Right, good.
And there's something I need, we need to fill out.
Right, there's something in the envelope there that...
No. It's got my name pretty well spelled out here.
Yes, yes, yes. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come back again.
How are you going to beat that, Jeff? Did you bring money too, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. He's going to be asking for the check, isn't he? Next, we have from the airport, he's flying up here, is Mr. Jeff Wig.
President Parks, members of the council, thank you very much for allowing me to come in today. As you all know, there's a requirement that the airport annually present a report of activities to the City Council and the County Board that's built into the airport ordinance. So last year, I had the good fortune to come with Chairman Larson from the Commission. He's unavailable to come today. I think he's traveling, as he always is, being a frequent flyer out of Brainard. So just last year, when I came, we, I was discussing two major projects that we were looking at. And I thought I would give just a brief update on those first. One was the potential remodel and/or rebuilding of our General Aviation Terminal, which is the original building from 1951, 52, something like that, the red brick building where I worked in the 1980s when I was there. And we're partnering with Air Motive Enterprises to potentially rebuild or remodel that space. And now, Air Motive Enterprises has elected to defer that for at least a year. They're working on some other aspects of their business, including building an aircraft sales business. And I'm told that they've just been successful in selling a couple of new airplanes, including one possibly to Europe. So I'm hoping to be the one to fly that over. But we'll see if I get that job. Probably not. The other main project I wanted to update on was regarding the sewer and water. And I'm certain everyone here's been following that and been participating in that very closely. Of course, we had a lot of things moved very quickly on that, changing the direction here in the first weekend in May. And there were a number of phone calls. You know, Mr. Wussel was involved in, our legislators were involved in, and I got involved in a little bit myself. And that's been a really a wonderful partnership, a five-way partnership between the city and the county, Brainard Lakes Area Development, the Brainard Lakes Chamber, and of course, the airport. And now, if things, if the voters in November in Baxter approve of their local option sales tax funding option, we'd add a sixth partner to that, which would be the City of Baxter. And I think it just speaks volumes of the collaboration that we're able to do in our community to be able to pull something like that together. The, of course, the, that's involved a lot of my time over the last year, testifying in Senate committees. We hosted the House Capital Investment Committee at the airport last fall. They came and they happened to actually come on the day of our pilot brat feed. So they were able to rearrange their schedule and stay and have brats with the pilot community, which was, which was a lot of fun for them. They assured me that is a gift they can accept. They can accept a brat, but nothing more. And of course, now, because of all of this, the legislature has authorized a funding mechanism through the local option sales tax. But there is a lot of work yet to be done locally, including, of course, that critical vote by the City of Baxter in this fall. A couple of other items I would update on quickly. Purchases, we just purchased a high-speed snowplow for the airport last year. And our runway snowplows are just a beautiful thing to behold. They're 24 feet wide, they plow the runways at about 40 miles an hour because the objective is to get them cleared very quickly. And we can't allow much snow on the airport. And so we just were able to purchase that last year. And if anybody ever wants a ride, you're welcome to come on out during a snow event. They're just a blast. This year, we are fortunate to be eligible for some additional federal funding. And so because of that, we've moved up a purchase of a, of a snowblower, a new runway snowblower. Our existing snowblower is over 20 years old. And it becomes a concern because it's the only one we have, to make sure that that one's always in working order. And large snowbanks are something that airplanes don't like. And so we utilize that snowblower to blow the snowbanks back. And it's quite an impressive machine. Just a quick update also on activities and enplanements. We've seen a lot more interest now, all of a sudden, in the last three or four months in hangar rentals. And we do have some vacancies in some of our hangars. We've even had some preliminary conversations about the possibility of building additional private hangars at the field. And all of it's very preliminary at this point, but it's very encouraging because after the economic downturn, of course, those, those conversations stopped cold for a number of years. And it's good to see that happening again. In another good sign, the fuel sales through Air Motive Enterprises were up over 15% in 2013 as compared to 2014. And again, another good sign of a recovering economy and, of course, interest in people in coming to Brainard. So that's very, it's a very encouraging sign for the airport and the community to see that. Our enplanements, the number of outbound passengers out, going out on the Delta flights for the six months ended at April 30th, were up about 20% over the total the previous year. Good sign of the economic recovery. I always couch that with a small asterisk in that that same period a year ago was a pretty low period for enplanements for the airport. So we needed to be up by a good percentage and we are. So that's, that's been a very good thing to see. We've done a lot of surveying of passengers during the month of March and April to find out how they feel about the airport, where they're going, what they'd like to see us do in the community. And we've also been out, the Delta manager and I care in Skerrill, they've been out to visit a number of our frequent flyer businesses in the area. We just had a very good visit over at a census, talking to them. They have about 25 people who routinely fly at least once a month out on business. So we've been visiting with them and asking them about what they would like to see in the future for the airport as well. So those have been really fruitful meetings. And a couple of personal activity highlights that I wanted to mention. I had the opportunity to go through one-week aircraft rescue firefighter training last year. I got a little bit of taste of what the folks in Kevin's world, Chief Stunek's world, have to do. I had to put on the SCBA gear and crawl around in a smoke-filled airplane. And it's just something I hope I never have to experience in real life. And I have the utmost admiration for people who do that day in and day out. And as a matter of fact, I should mention, we do recurrent monthly training with Kevin. He comes out, Chief Stunek comes to the airport and does recurrent training with myself and the four staff, who are also certified as airport firefighters. Also gone through training on emergency medical responses required by the job. I've had the opportunity to facilitate, on behalf of the Chamber, Lisa Paxton, as she was retiring, asked me to facilitate a Business Owners and Executives Roundtable Group that she convenes with a number of the CEOs in the area. And so I had the opportunity to meet with them, which was really a wonderful experience. And I've asked them if they would let me stay on. Now, the Chamber CEO, Matt Killian, is going to be taking over that group going forward. So I'm hoping to be able to continue to meet with that group. And those of you who, if you were, if you weren't listening really closely, you may have missed my one and only debut as a radio DJ on WJJY here about a month ago, or about two weeks ago, actually. And what kid didn't want to be a radio DJ when they were growing up? And I was, I was included in that. So it was a fun experience and I really appreciated those folks letting me come in and do that at WJJY. And if you're ever given the opportunity, I encourage you to do it. They make it very easy. And they need to for me. A couple of other updates, just briefly, on the future. The, I know the city has gone through an extensive strategic planning process here within the last year. The airport had a parallel strategic planning process that we went through in April, May, and June of last year that involved not only the Airport Commission, but about another dozen stakeholders from the community, including the Chamber CEO, the BladeX CEO, some of our frequent flyers, business owners on the field. We had quite an extensive process to come up with a strategic plan that's posted on our website and set goals in a variety of areas for the airport. Increase in employment on the airport, increase in aircraft enplanements or outbound passengers, increase in fuel sales, a number of different things that were built into that. And one of the goals that we hope to do, and this would be facilitated by that sewer and water connection if it were to occur, and that is a, a business airpark on the field, which would not be an industrial park per se, it would focus on aviation-related businesses that would only be operating at an airport. So there would be a specific reason for them to be there. So we're hoping to be able to meet that jobs target in the future by building that and starting the preliminary plans on that. Couple of other things I'll just mention for the future. We have a tour of the airport coming up after our Airport Commission meeting this Thursday. And we still, we have at least one more room, one more seat in the van. So if any member of the City Council wanted to join us at 10:30 on this Thursday, I'm sure you'd be very welcome to attend. And we'll be riding around in the Civil Air Patrol's van, taking a look at some of the corners of the airport most people don't get to see very often. And then finally, our event this summer, it's, I don't know if you knew this, but it's Smokey Bear's 70th birthday this year. And in celebration, our DNR air tanker base on the field is hosting an open house that day. That if luck holds and the plane is available, we'll be having a demonstration water drop or two from those CL-215 air tankers, the big yellow ones that dip out of the lake. Helicopter demonstrations, number of ground firefighting demos and equipment will be there, as well as some aircraft, other aircraft of interest. So be a fun one for families to go to on Saturday, the 14th, which is the day before Father's Day from 10 to 3:00. And with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. On the airport hangars, I'd like, not tonight, but I'd like sometime to have you put together a report of how long it has taken to pay off those hangars. Unless you've raised the rent considerably in the very recent past, I think the public has pretty much subsidized the hangars out there. And it's always been kind of a point of contention with me because obviously, if you can afford a private plane, I wouldn't put you down there with genuinely poor disadvantaged people. And so I know that the rents have been extremely low. I think you raised them a little bit, but probably not enough. But I would like a report of how long it has taken. Because if you're going to contemplate building more hangars, then come to the city and the county and want some more money so you can do that. I guess I'm not real happy about that idea. I think that they should be self-sold.
I can't speak to the hangars, Alderman Coke, from a long time ago.
Well, I realize, you fairly know, but I remember from years back about that. And I know that they were subsidized by the revenues that the city and county paid, levies. And the argument was, well, you know, you want to have these people have a place for their plane. Well, of course you do. But you also want them to pay the freight. Like, I like a garage for my car, but the public doesn't pay for it. So I think we would, I would like that because if there's any additional discussion on building new hangars, you know, I'm, I'm going to be really tough on how you're going to pay.
Sure. I can speak just at a, at a high level to a couple of those things. Mayor, would you like to go first?
No, you go ahead. Then I'll.
The, the last two, three or four, I'm familiar because we just had this discussion yesterday at the airport. The last three or four sets of hangars that have been built have been primarily financed through a MINDOT Aeronautics loan program. It's a low-interest loan program that finances building of the hangars. We just paid off, we have one hangar loan still outstanding for the latest group of larger hangars that we built. And essentially, my understanding is the rents have been set at such a level to make those loan payments and repay them. And I know one of the things that we've discussed at the airport certainly is not to build any more hangars unless we have sufficient number of tenants who have pledged to take those hangars such that we can repay those loans. But I can certainly look into that.
I would appreciate it, Jeff.
Certainly.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
If I may, one of the things, I know back when I was on the Airport Commission, that there was one gentleman that had a big plane and he paid for the entire hangar. So it was not any tax dollars or whatever. I mean, he, he wanted a nice hangar and he basically, I believe, donated it to the, to the airport, so.
Yes, we have about seven hangars like that at the airport, I believe, that they're on leased land and the owners will build them entirely at their own expense, including paying some of the airport charges as well, so any of the costs we incur. And then typically, what they will do is they will, every hangar that's built on the field, we have a reversionary clause in the lease, which means at the end of their lease period, whether it's 20 years, 30 years, in some cases 40, for a very large expensive hangar, that reverts back to the airport at the end at no cost. And, but what some of those tenants have done is they've actually turned it over right away. And of course, one of the benefits they get from that is then they don't pay any of the personal taxes and a little property tax by doing that. They still have the 20, 30, or 40-year commitment to use the building. And so they will just amortize that cost over that period. So a lot of the larger, the larger private "hangars" quote unquote, have been entirely owner-financed.
Just follow up on that, mentioning about taxpayer dollars. In essence, it's the, the users or the owners of those airplanes that are actually paying for the tank, the hangars themselves versus our tax dollars or the monies that are contributed to from both the city and the county to pay those, for those hangars. Am I correct on that?
Those private hangars?
To, to, to pay for the hangars.
The, the private hangars are entirely owner-financed. Those are entirely owner-paid. And then the, the, I know the last four series of, of rental hangars that we have built that are owned by the airport outright and built by the airport, I believe they were almost entirely financed through that hangar loan program.
So that would not be tax dollars per se?
No.
And that's, I think that's what Mary's alluding to is that our, the monies that we contribute both as a city and a county would be helping pay for those hangars.
Well, and certainly that, you know, the city and the county both do contribute about $150,000 each to the operation of the airport. So it's about 30% of our budget is, comes from the contributions from the city and the county. So indirectly, you know, you could.
There was, I know. And so, you know, I don't know how you, I don't, I watch it, but there in the past. If that has changed, I'm happy with it. But I would like a report.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I just want to say we're very fortunate to have you as Airport Manager. I've, you know, delighted, and we've got a meeting this Thursday, you know? And since you've been Airport Manager, the room has been just about full at every meeting. I mean, you know, and that's, I mean, the Airport Commission draws more people than his council as far as the meetings. So he does a wonderful job out there. We have, you know, talked a lot about this lease and I know that we're checking prices with other people for the vacancy rate and everything else as far as, but we do a lot of work out there, but you do a tremendous amount. And my hat's out to you for doing a great job out there. There hasn't, you know, that airport is running at its finest with you, so I'm giving you a...
Well, thank you. It's been a great pleasure and I just have very much appreciated the opportunity the community's given me to do it.
The excitement is definitely in the air.
Billy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Intended, right?
In the air.
Yeah.
Go ahead. No? Okay.
Any cool old planes come out that those of us who don't fly get to ride? Like the, like remember the Ford Tri-Motor?
The Ford Tri-Motor?
Yeah, and those Barnstormer.
We don't have that coming this year. We're really hopeful we can get that Barnstormers group to come back. They had, they've indicated that they never do the, a city twice, they never have, but they had such a good experience here. The community just came out as, you know.
Yeah, it's cool.
It was very cool. And so we really hope we can, we can get that group back in 2015 or 2016. I don't know if that's possible or not because, as I said, they'd have to change their policy. But they did indicate that, to the organizers of the Barnstormers group, that they would try and do that. But yeah, we'd like to see it and we know the community loves it, you know, families love it. It's definitely a plus for the airport and the community.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just have one more thing.
No, Jim.
Speaking of that kind of thing, I remember back in the day, we used to go out and watch air shows once in a while. And my, and you don't hear about air shows that often anymore. I'm wondering if it's because of liability factors.
There aren't as many air shows as there used to be. That's very true. I helped organize one in, I don't remember when it was, 1985 or 87 or something like that, the first one we'd had in a while at that point. That, you're right, they are more difficult. The, the break-even point is raised because of the, the acts are more expensive and unfortunately, it is because of liability issues to a large extent. It is something that our small ad hoc events committee at the airport has talked about is to whether we want to take that next step. The, the big headliner folks, like the, the Blue Angels and the Thunderbirds and those folks, they're, they're booked out three years in advance. However, there are, there's a lot you can do without having the Thunderbirds there, too.
I just want to add one more thing. A neat, definitely a hard-working manager. We get emails from, starting about 6:30 in the morning till about 10:30 at night. Even some commissioners have asked, can you just hold back in the evening? I said, just don't read them, but I, I get a chance. But I know that you must be putting 12, 15 hours a day in there. I've never seen anybody work as hard as you do as a manager. Appreciate that.
Well, it's fun. It's, when your job is fun, it's not work.
Mr. Chair, could I ask, Jeff, I know you have a screen out there where you put various announcements. Could you put the History Week agenda on, please?
Certainly.
Thank you, sir.
No, no problem.
Any other questions?
No problem.
Well, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Personnel and Finance Committee Report. Mr. Beavens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number one has been dispensed with. Item number two, the Brainerd HRA Lease Revenue Refunding of 2002 Bonds. This is just for your information, it's a refinancing of a bond that the HRA took out. It's kind of a pass-through bond to ISD-181. It's on the old Super 1 building, which is now the, I don't know what it's called, the Brainerd Educational Facility. And as you can see, the expectations are with the refinancing. As a community, we're going to save around $53,000. So it's a good thing to, it's basically a refinance. So if there's no questions, that's what this is about. The bonds have been let, I don't know how many years ago they were.
2002.
2002 is when they were let and this is just a refinancing of them to save some money. And that savings actually gets passed on to the ISD-181, which is paying for them. So, but we all, we all win, win, win on this deal. That's the information on item number two. Item number three is a newsletter discussion. And as you know, we had part of a, we had a newsletter as part of our, part of our citywide planning. We've done three of them. Response has been good, but there isn't any money in the budget to continue to mail it out. So the motion on Personnel and Finance is to continue with the newsletter in an, in an online form and to notify citizens that it is available through the Public Utilities Watts News and to hopefully continue to garner financial support so we can mail it out again in the future. An I, so move.
Second. Is there discussion?
Very good letter.
Yes, okay. With no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a second, FYI. As you also know, as part of our technology update in our planning sessions, we're also always looking to try and update our website. If you go on the website and Counselperson Madden went on there, you'll, you'll find that you, one of the newsletters that has been published is in one spot and another newsletter is in another spot. And we are trying to update that as funds allowed. Our staff is, as you know, been shrinking and yet asked to do more with less. And updating the website is something that we're always working for. But one of the things we're trying, we're, we're going to certainly try and do is can't, we're instituting the Can Dolly Do It Plan? So if Dolly can find it, then, then we're all good. So it doesn't do any good to put it on there if you can't find it. And it's got to be, like Einstein said, explain it to your grandma if she can understand it, you did good. So that's the end of that. Item number four, Engineering Department. Motion is, and there is a newsletter here from Engineer Hallsetter. Motion is to accept the recommendation to offer a conditional job offer to James Reed for the Engineering Tech Mission Position, subject to successful completion of the required pre-employment exams with a tentative start date of June 23, 2014, or sooner if available. It's recommended the starting pay be established at 85% of the base rate for the position, as noted in the IBEW Local Number 31 Administrative Support Union Contract at $20.23 per hour, Step A of the Salary Administration Plan, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries.
Thank you, Hunter, report.
Okay. Well, we'll move into the Safety and Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five items. We're going to jump around a little bit. And I'm going to take item number three and just roll that right into the 9A. So I'll hold on that one. So we'll do one, two, and then we have a four and five that you do not have, but it will be brief. Item number one, and I had asked for this to be put on the agenda real quick, was there was some complaints about some poles that Charter Steel is hanging their cables on and from Lowell going out to Wassa. And there's some people that, and it was very, very hard trying to get ahold of somebody I called Brainerd Public Utilities. I had called the engineer and I did get ahold of Bud Roberts. He'd said that he would take a look at and get back to me. He has not done that yet. But what it is, is they transfer their, or Brainerd Public Utilities transfers their power off of these poles, either on new poles or goes underground. And the process is, is Charter's given 30 days to do the same. But if they don't do it in 30 days, then Brainerd Public releases the poles to them so they get to keep the poles. Then the poles become the responsibility. It's kind of like a leaching process by Charter from me because, you know, now they get a free pole and there is no incentive for them to remove. So in these alleys, we see a double set of poles going down and they'll chop off the top and the aesthetics of it, you know, is not. And so basically, I'm just brought it here trying to, and Brainerd Public Utilities says, bring it to the council. You got it in your franchise agreement as far as what needs to be done and everything else. Reading this, I also see we got a charter mission that should be addressing this and I, and that's my question, you know? So these are the questions that we came out of committee. One was, you know, I guess this agreement is good for 15 years. Mr. Beavens signed it back in 2005. I was just wondering if it could be, you know, the franchise agreement revisited sooner than 15 years. Number two is, who is the committee and if we could set up a committee appointment? Mary is the liaison. Number two, the current fees I read in this franchise are at 3%. I was wondering if the city is ever interested in looking at that and raising that fee amount? I know it also has to work with CTC. And then I have never seen the totals that we are receiving for franchise fees and what that would be. And then like, like I also got on 3-2 in this franchise agreement, the math should be provided to the city and Jeff said that hasn't been done either. So I just think it's about time that maybe we can take a look at this and bring it, and then also a contact person. We don't have a contact person. And I did call both places, trying to find somebody in town to call Charter in regards to any complaints that you do have. So that, basically, it's, right now, I'm referring it to Mary and she's got to pretty much set up a committee or take the...
We haven't met for quite a while. I think since I was president of the council, actually. And, but I will, I will, and I'll get the current list from Nikki. And there is, I believe, a chairperson. And I will contact that person and ask him to set it up and have something back by the first meeting in July. So we'll, we'll try to work on those things. And FYI, on the franchise fees, it is part of the franchise fee that the city uses to provide the TV coverage. We pay the people who do it school for that.
Mr. Beavens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I am aware of this and of this issue. And I thank Mr. Sheila and Safety and Public Works for putting it on their agenda. I, I looked at this as a little different, of course, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not always in favor of another committee meeting. No disrespect, I hope that Charter Commission goes, goes great guns. But I would, my recommendation would be to write a letter to Charter saying they have to move to the new poles. And just see what their response is. I read this a little different than you, Gary. I read that they have the right, we grant them the right to use poles. We, the city, grant them the right to use poles. And that means we grant them to, we put new poles in and they're still using the old poles, so there's a double set of poles. My recommendation would be to have staff write Charter a letter saying they have to move to the new poles. We'll be removing the new poles at this date. And just put it in there. I think this agreement allows for that. I, I don't see how it doesn't, no. Our attorney might want to weigh in, but I, I think to start the process, just tell them they got to move to, they got guys who can do this in a day. You know what I mean?
One of the hiccups with this would be the caveat of underground. Now, if some of these areas, they're going underground, we're talking about poles, then the poles are re-also, at that point, asking them to go underground. Because Brainerd Public Utilities has now took their stuff off the pole, went underground, and the old poles are going to hang there and you can push them over now because they're so rotten. But they get the poles and they don't have no, so do you want to also include in that, you know, any time Brainerd Public Utilities abandons that line underground or area?
I think that would be more, you know, for an all-encompassing policy. And I think Mrs. Coop's always, you know, on the ball with policy and rightfully so. But I, I'm separating the issue of this particular two-block stretch, or roughly two-block stretch of, get your stuff off the poles. I believe that in that particular two-block stretch, the city is still above ground, if I'm not mistaken. So move to the new poles, get the old, it's the only the two blocks or the couple of blocks where there's a double set of poles. You know, thank you, please, you've had two years, but they probably, they might not even know.
That's not the only place in town.
I understand. I'm just suggesting, maybe, you know, that, that the item of citywide policy would be a good thing for the committee. The item of this particular place, this particular stretch where there's two blocks, be very specific of the blocks we're talking about. Please move to the new poles. We will be taking the old poles down.
But, Mr. Chair, I don't have a problem with it, except that has the city ever told them that the city has no additional use for the old poles? Because if you read the second paragraph of Section 3.8, it says the city shall retain and hereby does retain the right to utilize the existing city-owned poles for further city use and to require removal of the cable by the grantee for existing city-owned poles are not sufficient to adequately handle the proposed city use and grantee's cable. Now, it would seem to me that the implication in that paragraph is that they can't remove those poles unless they had been notified by the city that the city had no further use for them. And I don't know if that has happened. I haven't heard that it did. But it, I mean, you can't just, I mean, take a look at it. That's what the city shall retain and hereby does retain. So if they had gone in and taken down the poles and then the city came along and said, hey, just a minute, we didn't give you permission to do that, there could be trouble. So I'm not at all opposed to Alderman Beavens' suggestion. I'm just wondering if in the overall context, maybe the committee can have something proposed to be added that would say if the city moves, the line puts in new poles, they would notify the cable company that cable company must remove the old poles or at least move their...
Jeff?
Michael, Mr. President, the, this issue is a little bit more complicated and we may need an opinion from the city attorney on it. It's my understanding that even though within our franchise agreement, we allow the utilities to, to be on poles or to obtain leases, permissions, whatever, as it turns out, they do have a lease agreement with BPU to be located on the poles. So there's another agreement involved here. And under the terms of that agreement, as I understand... And under the terms of that agreement, as I understand it, when BPU installs new poles, they do notify them that, that they need to either relocate to that pole, or if they do not do that within a thirty-day period of time, then the poles that, in this case, Charter remains on, become the property of Charter. And so then BPU relinquishes any ownership in those poles, Charter becomes responsible for the removal of the poles. So, so there's this other agreement out there, which, between BPU and Charter, which, which kinda complicates our whole franchise agreement. So that's where my thought would be, perhaps some legal opinion might be necessary to straighten that out.
Should that be part of the franchise agreement? Would you just explain which is not part of the franchise agreement, with Brainerd Public Utilities? I don't see it in there where they can, they're, you know, giving the poles away after thirty days.
And we don't have a franchise agreement with Brainerd Public Utilities, maybe that's the, maybe that's the answer, that we have a franchise agreement with Brainerd Public Utilities, and through that agreement, regulate how they handle their poles and the multiple or common uses of those poles.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bevins? I apologize, I was trying to simplify the thing. I'm just suggesting, in this short period block, we request respectfully, having nothing to do with who's gonna take down the poles, the Charter move to the new poles, period, end of story, we'll worry about the poles later, let's get them off the poles. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna contradict anything or make it a legal battle, I wanna send a letter saying, "Would you please move to the new poles during these three blocks? The poles are rotten, the neighbors are complaining, we'd like to take them down. Please move to the new poles."
If that's a form of a motion, I'll second it.
I'd motion that. We do send that, the staff sends the letter requesting Charter to move to the new poles in the affected blocks.
Between, what were they, between third and fourth?
Yes, it's between third and fourth, and from H to M Street.
H to the Wassa plant.
Yeah, to M, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get that, Nikki? If you wanna rephrase your--
Yeah, the motion is to direct staff to send a letter to Charter Communication requesting that we would like to remove the duplicate poles in the outlined area, and to please move their stuff, their lines to the new pole.
And then we have a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all--
One thing, I would like to just ask, you know, direct staff to find out who actually owns the poles. I mean, if part of the issue is the fact that the poles are deteriorated, and they belong to Charter, then Charter needs to take care of them, plain and simple, and the city doesn't have to pay to take care of them if they belong to Charter.
That's what Brainerd Public Utilities is worried about, you know, they don't want--
And that'd be a question for, for the attorney, and then for engineering, to see, one, who owns them, two, are they, are they a danger in eyes, or do they need to be taken down? And then we could send another nice letter to Charter saying, "Please take those poles down."
Thank you for that.
My only quick comment would be, let's not lose track of Jeff's comment, you know, otherwise we're just kicking the can down the road. Separating this, streamlining the contracts was done first, and I don't know how we do that, how do we keep on trying to simplify that, so that we don't have to have this conversation?
In other words, who really owns those poles at this point? Is that part of the question?
Why are there two separate contracts, why don't we even know there was a different contract? It just seems a little loose caboose here.
The reason I brought it here was, that's what I found out when I was on the phone and going from place to place, I hadn't, nobody really was taking any responsibility for anything, you know, because I thought it was somebody else's.
If it, if we're having such a hard time finding just even a contact person, how in the world are we organizing when there's new work to be done? When, when BPU is putting in, maybe they're going underground, and how, how is Charter, or how is anybody to know what our future projects are gonna be, be able to do trenching, or to do any of these things? It seems like there's a huge lack of communication.
Mr. President, I don't think there's a lack of communication, I think BPU notifies every, all the other users on the poles, and notifies them of when they're relocating, and informing them that, you know, they've got a certain period of time to relocate also. Either that, or, or in this particular case, they become owners of the, of the existing system if they don't relocate.
Isn't that kinda your question, is, since BPU's got the contact information, why can't it be made public?
Right.
So that's kind of a--
Well, and that's one of the other questions I had, is because, you know, and I had heard it in the earlier meeting too, is even the providing of the, the maps annually, you know, to know who's got what and where, and it just seems like, we just, we just don't know. So, you know, I guess that would be my only question I would throw in there.
Okay, does everybody remember what the motion is? We're just looking at this small area, and then the rest of it will hopefully take care of its, so. So all in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries.
Item number two--
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I make a second motion on that item? To refer the issue of the contracts, contacts, and pole ownership to the Charter Commission?
No.
To the cable TV advisory. I apologize. To the cable TV advisory. I think Chip brought a good point. I'd make the motion to refer the bigger picture of contacts, who owns what and where, the contracts, the coincidental duplicates of contracts, all of those issues, to the cable TV and advisory, question aye so move.
And that would incorporate the five things that I brought up, maps, and poles, and everything else? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
There is an opening for that.
Yes, there is one opening, yep. Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number two, we should have Mr. Bevins in our committee. Item number two, he made two motions out of it. Nine oh one, Eleventh Avenue Northeast Garage Demo. The motion is to accept the bid, there was two quotes, the motion is to accept the quote from D. Chantel excavating for one thousand eleven dollars, and I would so move, and part of that motion would be also to authorize certification to assess the property over a ten-year period.
Second.
Quickly on that is, you know, this is part of the Garfield, as you read in here, the Garfield project, and homeowner was cooperative with Jeff, and this was brought up to us about two months ago, we discussed going this route, so.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick looking at the quotes, one is, one is, just says for demo and removal of the residential garage, but the other one goes in a little bit further, it says of removal of the garage content and, and backfill to grade. I mean, they're apples for apples, right?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure, 'cause they weren't actually apples for apples on the estimate. Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries.
I'm gonna jump over item number four, which is Terry Kinder, and he's here, and I'm gonna go quickly to item five, which is alley grading, and we threw that on there because there was a few complaints coming in about the alleys, and Jeff can update the council on, quickly on what his plan is for alley grading.
Why can't, Mr. President? There are, our crews have, I think as conditions permit, they have been grading some alleys, I'm not sure exactly where they're at in their schedule. The, you know, since, you know, we start out the spring with quite wet weather, and more recently, we've had additional rain, so the alleys have to be dry before we can get in and grade them. In addition, we've been focusing quite a bit on our street sweeping initially, but we are done with that now, so our next, you know, big maintenance event, we'll be getting into alleys and getting those graded, so I would think within, you know, weather permitting, within the next week or so, we should be able to hit most of the alleys in town.
Thank you for that. Any questions on that? Then we'll jump to item number four, Terry Kinder gave me a call, and he's here on Friday, and was wondering if he was on the agenda, and, and we talked Sunday evening, and I told him, I said I'd be more than happy, you know, 'cause he wanted to explain a few things, 'cause he's in the penalty zone right now, and either we were gonna put it under eight B or nine B, we just put it on here, we have not heard from him, this'll be all brand new, we have not made a decision, this is the first time, and he just showed up now, so. Maybe Mark can update us quick on the issue at hand before--
If I, may I, may we hear from Mr. Kinder first?
Okay, if you want that way, go ahead, go ahead.
Do you wanna state your name and address, Terry?
Terry Kinder, fourteen twenty Quint Street. I was here, my, my deadline to have the house done was supposedly supposed to be today, but I've been diligently working on it, and due to the circumstances of the weather and stuff, I've had fourteen lost days of rain since our last meeting, and I was wondering if it'd be possible to get them fourteen days back, and I believe I could have the job done at that time.
Mark, you wanna add anything to this?
Can I clarify something? By done, what do you mean, the whole project, or just the exterior?
The outside, the yard and outside of the building. I have pictures here of what the, it looked like tonight when I left the job, of how far I am, and I took them just before I came in.
For purposes of my history, 'cause I haven't--
Yeah.
Can I ask when the initial building permit was taken out?
September, I believe it was September, I believe September thirteenth.
Two thousand twelve?
Yeah.
Twelve.
But I had, I had some health issues, and so it's, I was off for nine months.
Thank you. We have started this process, was about a month and a half ago, to get you off a dead center, you know, trying to move this project along, we did it in itty-bitty bites, and then you managed to get there, you know, and close and everything, and Tim is not here, and you were at the meetings prior, and then this last phase was June second, and that was everything on the outside. I'm gonna say I have seen you work hard, and I know you have some rain days, but I'm gonna definitely listen to the council on what they think. When we initially talked last night, you asked for six additional days, you upped that up to fourteen since our conversation, so, and that's what I was presenting to the council was, that you thought there was six days of rain that kept you from getting it, and if you could have six more days, you would have it completed. Since then, you've kinda gone to fourteen, and maybe you can explain that. Do you know why you're going from six to fourteen?
No, fourteen is, I, when I had talked to you the other day, I said I thought it was seventeen, but I didn't have my paperwork with me, and then I got my paperwork, which I hadn't talked to you since I did get it, but you, you said, "Do you think it is six?" And I said, "I'm not really sure, but I think it's more like seventeen, but I don't have my paperwork with me."
I was asking about Randy, is that good?
So are the piles, I didn't see them in those pictures, you removed the piles?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Have you removed the piles that are in the backyard?
The, of dirt, no, no. I removed all the debris, but I haven't removed the dirt.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President, and that's the question that you asked, kind of leads into where I'm coming from in this whole process. I'm not so sure, and I haven't heard Mr. Kinder respond to it, I'm not so sure he understands that being done means all of the debris removed from the site. It involves grading the site, it involves black dirt for the entire site, it involves seed or sod for the entire site. It is, I don't know if he completely understands the magnitude of work left to be done just for that. So if there's anything less than that being expected, I think we need to have a conversation.
Well, the, the black dirt is on the site, that's what the pile in the backyard is, is the black dirt that I skinned off. As far as drainage and everything, it's, I mean, it's close now, I'm, I mean, I'm gonna cut it down a little bit more, I got one problem in the back of the yard on the west, southwest corner, which needs some attention, but the rest of the yard, the drainage is pretty good.
Can I ask what the fine is per day?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars a day?
Yeah, up to a maximum of two thousand, I believe.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the goal was to get the project done, and there've been a lot of extensions, and I think a great deal of consideration given, and I don't think that it has proceeded as quickly as it could have, I have to say that. Now, I think clearly the goal of the city, the council in representing this is to get the job done, but as expeditiously as possible. And I think I said in committee that I'm not going along with any extra time, there's been time enough, and work has not been completed, but once again, this is for the city, and the goal is to get it done, not necessarily to get a fine. I would be willing to go with that, but I think that's it. I don't think fourteen, Mr. Kinder, how many extensions have we given? I haven't kept track, but it's several extensions that have already been given. And so, summer's coming on, and none of us can predict the weather, and there might be more rain, although I believe the forecast is a relatively dry period for the next few days here. I would go with six more days, but I, I think that's it. The goal is to get it done, and I, what you have done looks pretty nice, and I like that, glad to see that, but there is more, and it needs to be finished, the neighborhood has been very patient over there, it went on for quite a long time, and I had many complaints from that area, over and over and over and over, and it makes the council feel like we're just almost helpless when nothing gets done. But six days, this is June second, six day, I would give until the ninth, which is next Monday, that's more than, that's more than six days, that's seven days. But I would go a week from Monday, and if the inspector goes over and looks at it then, and it's not done, I would include if, for a motion, to begin the imposition of, so that's my position, and maybe others have different ideas.
Has there been some fines applied previous, because of the, we're doing this in increments, and was one of the increments late, and there was some fines heard at that point?
I think three days.
It was a three-day fine.
Were those fines paid then?
No, I haven't paid no fines.
Part of, part of the problem, I think, that we're facing here is that, maybe his intentions were good two years ago, when he applied for the building permit, et cetera, et cetera, and I, I am really pleased to see that home refurbished, I think that's awesome, but because of the fact that maybe you don't have enough help, that's part of what's dragging things out. I mean, if you had a decent crew, you could put that together pretty quick. So what I'm wondering is, you were mentioning fourteen days, and then there's fines, you know, if we took that fine money and suggested or required that that money, instead of being paid as fines, being, that you would pay help to get it done, completely done, per Mark's recommendation, in six days, and then we don't have to sit here and go through this over and over again? If it, if you can't, if we can't allocate the fines to the workforce to get it done, then we're just gonna--
One thing I wanted to quickly point out, Terry has been a good citizen about this, he has contacted me, and I don't know other, if he's contacted others, he does show some concern, and I just hope there's a little bit of that, he has showed up as, at every meeting that we've asked him, and he wanted to come here to explain to the council. So he's not one of those that you're gonna have to call and write, and, you know, and follow and chase, he's been, and I hope, in the decision tonight, and that's why I'm holding back, that you would show some compassion, at the same time, we do want the project done.
I have a question, I'm not a construction guy. Is it feasible to do in six days? Do we need to give fourteen? 'Cause if we're asking him to do something that's not feasible, giving six days, he might as well pull his checkbook out and write us the fines that, that it's gonna take to do the work, and if we're looking at getting the job done and not taking fines, I don't see a point in giving, if we're gonna give an extension, give an extension that would be inadequate for him to get the work done in a reasonable amount of time. Does anybody know, can you, can you address that, or can Mark address that? Or both of you?
Building official Kai is not here tonight, and I can't address exactly the amount of work that he has left to do in the dwelling, but I'm glad you raised that point, because from my perspective, just the exterior work alone around that property, the way the project has been progressing, I don't see the exterior work being done in six days. see the exterior work being done in six days.
And if I can help out, Tim Kai and Terry had a discussion and it was going to be brought up that he had until June 30th. It was because of what happened when he didn't meet the first guidelines that it was moved to, at the last meeting, we showed some stamina saying, "Hey, we're, we're going to show some seriousness," that it was moved to June 2nd. And so, and I know you had told him that you could have it done by the end of June and I know that the building official agreed with that at that time and if you would have progressed, I think you would have had this timeframe. And I think we even mentioned it in committee. So I know that you're not going to get it done in six days myself and I, I know that 17 is closer. I would like to see it completed. I want to first of all tell everybody, I'm glad it's not a 400 square foot home. I see your building with a 1,200, so, and it's a beautiful home in the area.
Anybody else?
I drove by it today and it is beautiful. I, I will say that and I am appreciative, I, I see there's no shingles on here still though, I mean, right? It's just, there's no shingles still on the, on the roof. I mean, you're working on siding, but you've just got-
The, the new addition is completely done. I don't have the old one, the, the original house completely shankled. I have part of it done.
Okay.
But that's, I subbed that out to, for, because of the time factor and it's just because the guy hasn't been able to get there. He was, Saturday was his last day there. I expected him today and called him, but I got no answer.
So you did, you subbed out the entire roof? Okay, okay. And I didn't realize we had requested that black dirt and seed be on by June 1st. I thought that we had just said the grading be done and all of the debris and piles be gone, so I apologize, I didn't understand that we were asked for black dirt seed or to be into that position. But I guess, you know, I would be looking at, I know how hard it is to work when it is, when you do have rain days. It, it, just because it stops raining doesn't mean it's easy to walk around the grounds and do siding and do the rock work that you've done on here and, and I appreciate the work that you've done and I'm sure your neighbors are appreciating it too. However, I guess I would be in favor of, and hear me for a second, I would be in favor of giving a few days, but I would also be very much in favor of after seven days, the fines start. I would be in favor of waiving them if after 14 days, you're complete, you're absolutely completed, waiving the, the fines that have accumulated. Because I think that if we continue to give extensions, it'll always be continuing to give extensions. Follow me?
Is that a motion?
I, I don't know, I don't know if we're ready for a motion.
Go ahead.
If we're ready for a motion. I guess my motion would be to allow for six more days for you to, to complete the exterior of the home.
Sorry, by six days, you're talking about a week from today or seven days?
I'm going to say six business days. How's that?
Business days?
Yes.
We better specify a date.
Okay, that would be, I don't have a calendar.
Today's the 2nd.
Today's the 2nd, but we, we start tomorrow as a business day? Then it'd be four?
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five. So by the 9th, that needs to be done. The exterior needs to be done by June 9th. Windows, windows siding, shingles, the grading, the black dirt, the seed, if that was part of it, the black dirt and the, obviously the piles are going to be gone, the debris's all going to be removed. So it will be no evidence that you're doing a, a, a job, I guess unless you're going to be working on the interior, but to the neighbors, there'll be no evidence that you are refurbishing this home. You have until June 9th to finish the exterior of this home.
But?
But, then after June 9th, I guess, is where I would say, I would propose that we start fining then the hundred dollars a day. And give, you know, I guess for every day thereafter, up until the 16th?
What, you're saying 14?
14 days. By the 20th?
The 20th would be the 14th business.
Okay, by June 20th, that, that the, if it's not done, that, or if it is done, that we would waive the, the fines, okay?
Second. I would second.
Do you understand what our motion is?
Not completely, I'm having trouble hearing.
Okay. The motion is that we're going to give you seven days, seven business days, which is-
We'll give you till the 9th. That's probably the easiest way to say it.
June 9th. And to finish everything that Mark has made mention of. But if that doesn't happen, we'll start fining you up until, and if you finish it by the 20th, then we'll waive those, those fees, penalty fees.
As long as the house is done by the 20th?
Completely done, yep. There will be no more extensions. It'll just, it'll be the, there'll be the seven, the, the fees will start after the 9th and they'll continue on. If you don't have it finished by the 20th, then it'll be the fees from 7th to 20th and then on forever. Mark?
I heard Mr. Kinder say house, just so that we all understand, it's house and property.
Correct.
Correct.
That means, that means that you'll, you'll spread the black dirt and seed it and everything. Okay? Okay, so we have a motion?
I'm just going to add one more thing. You asked for 17 days, you just got 18 days, so.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, Mr. Chair, simply say it's like deja vu all over again. It makes me think of 13th and Pine and how many extensions and things we went on with. In effect, you're right, he has 18 days. In effect, that's what he has. That you can impose a fine, but it's meaningless if he has that much time. And I just want to remind everybody that we now have a code inspector. Hopefully, the code inspector will be a little more diplomatic than the one last year. But if he is not, then I think we need to tell everybody that when they're given a deadline and a fine is imposed, that doesn't mean anything. They probably have two more weeks to do it and otherwise come up and plead your case because we are setting a precedent and you're doing it for one person. And if you're going to do it for one person, you can't lean on some of the people in this town who were frankly harassed last year and then say to them, "However, the hundred-dollar fine starts right now and no time allowed." So I guess I have a real problem with it. I think giving that much time is unreasonable, Mr. Kinder, and I'm too are glad you've gone this far, but I know it's been years that it's looked awful over there and the neighborhood is not very good. I'm not going to-
Any other discussion?
I have to rebuttal because there's a big difference from mowing the lawn and putting this house together.
Yeah.
There is comparisons.
Yeah.
Why? Are you going to mow the lawn in the rain?
It's much easier.
Why? No, not if it's raining.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Both, same sign? Motion carries with one, no vote. Okay?
Thank you. Now we're back to item number three, which can roll right into 9A. Is it okay, Mr. President? Yep. Everybody, basically, well, we came out of committee, I, and we kind of referred to a memo that I have sent to and, and spoke with Mark here. And basically, what, we spent some time in committee, we have a head nod, you know, coming out of committee with items number one, if you look at, you know, the memo that I had sent, items number one, everybody is in favor out of committee, item number two, everybody was in favor out of committee, and item number four. And two out of three, we're okay with item number three. And there was some discussion and that seems to be the hiccup, I guess, you know, item number three, some are in favor and some are not. So we talked about maybe sending this back to the next meeting for Mark to draw it up, but Mark would like input from the rest of you on the issues that are here. And I can kind of go, I don't need to read them, I'm sure everybody can see what is here, you know, changing the current language from 400 square feet to 500 square feet minimum. That would be item number one. Item number two, 500 square foot homes only on non-conforming slash substandard lots. And, you know, those lots would have to be less than 7,000 square feet in size. Chip had a hiccup with the word older parts of Brainerd, I'm more unhappy to scratch that. And then item number three, 500 square foot homes on city lots that were in city limits prior to 1989, that did not seem to be a hiccup with two out of three. And then basically, why that was in there is because the newly parsed, parts of town that are annexed are generally platted, that there would never be non-conforming lots anyway. And a lot of people are putting covenants on to make sure that, that part of town, as they're coming along, a lot of developers have said they'll just put covenants on anyway. But this is for infill only. So, and then item number four, that this would be a trial basis and anything that comes up, we can just make some corrections and changes and, you know. So I would let, leave it open to the floor for anything else, but that's kind of what-
I just have a question.
Yes, yeah.
Why is number three really needed? I mean, if it's for infill only and non-conforming lots and if newly annexed areas are going to be conforming lots, do we, isn't that redundant?
There's been a hiccup on the infill and the definition of infill and there's that part where, yeah, they can just head right out into those open lots, open fields and put a 400.
But wouldn't those have to be non-conforming?
And Mark can help me out and I'm, I agree with you.
Yeah, they would.
That's what number two says.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're thinking number three is redundant.
That, that's kind of, you know, I was kind of wondering if I was missing something.
Yep.
Mark, did you want to say something?
Well, I thought that number two and number three were both needed, but Councilman Pritchett maybe raises a good point. You know, I guess I'd have to think out loud for a second, if all non, if they're only allowed on non-conforming lots, would there be non, for any particular reason, any non-conforming lots after 1989? There could be, did we annex any unplatted land? I'd have to rely on my history specialist to help me out with that one.
Yes, I think we probably annexed some unplatted land, but I don't think it was small parcels.
Okay.
It's all, it was all acreage.
So then, I guess it probably sounds like it is redundant to have both of them.
And I'm okay with scratching that.
And just add, I mean, if, if it did happen that we did have a small non-conforming lot, I mean, if we're looking at, you know, I, I personally wouldn't see a problem if we were allowing small houses to allow one out there. It's not like somebody's going to develop it and chop up a lot small to do an entire development of small houses.
Good, good catch.
So with that, then could we go ahead with the motion tonight because we're still staying in the restrictive area? We're not really going back and doing anything geographically or doing, changing any of that. And what we have done is basically could go with a second reading and the motion can move right on.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I may, one of the questions I had was, would any of the changes that are being suggested require any of the process to start over or go back and have a public hearing? And we talked about it in committee and I don't want to take words out of the attorney's mouth, but we are on the same page that no, the changes would not require any starting over with the process. So there would be no hearing. What I'd like to suggest though, is if I hear consensus from the council, is the planning department have the ability to take the ordinance back, make the changes, make sure everything is, try to get it right and bring it back for the second reading at the first meeting in July.
I don't think so.
Do we hear a motion to that effect?
So move?
We'll send it back to the planning commission.
Then I, since it's open for discussion, I have one question also, and this is directed at Mark. In looking at some of the changes here, like I'm looking at 54.5, okay, one second, R1, single family and dwellings greater than 400 feet, you know, are permitted to be less than 22 feet, that's crossed out in each section. But when you're looking at the, you know, the original part of the ordinance, you know, under section 4D, it says that they are permitted to be 22 feet wide. Are they?
A standard size dwelling, 750 square feet or more, has to be 22 feet wide.
That's the, no, so it's, we're keeping it where it has to be, so these small houses also would have to be?
No, small houses can't, do not have to be 22 feet wide.
Okay.
A house that's greater than 750 or 750 or greater has to be 22 feet wide. Thank you for, for bringing that up.
Because it said could be less than 22 feet wide and here's where it said could be less than 22 feet wide was crossed out, that's why I was kind of wondering.
Right, they don't, a dwelling that's, would be if the change is made from 500 to 750 square feet, does not have to be 22 feet wide. A dwelling that's 751 square feet has to be 22 feet wide.
Okay.
I think we had the discussion as far as still putting a minimum though on the smaller homes, on, on the width. I think Mary had brought that up. You know, it doesn't have to be 22 feet wide, but should there still be a minimum of how wide they should be?
Here we get into the consensus. I heard the issue brought up, but I didn't hear four or five voices saying we agree with that.
But then, that, that can be brought, we're doing the motion second, that, that's going back to planning, that can be brought up there and-
No, it's not going to go back to the planning commission.
No, going back to the-
Right now, we're, I've got about three changes that I'm hoping I hear consensus on and those are the ones, four changes, those are the ones that are out of, pretty much basically out of Councilman Schiller's email. Nothing else. The other thing I want to mention is, just so that we're all on the same page, the infill design standards applies to then any house that is, that is an infill house.
Non, on a non-
On a non, no, any in, any infill lot. So then you're not, so then you're saying then that a lot that's 7,000 square feet, it's empty in the middle of the city and someone proposes a house on that lot, the design standards are not going to apply. That's a complete change from what the recommendation is from the planning commission.
I think the issue is, there's two things. There's the definition of infill and then there's the ability to put a 500-foot, square foot house on non-conforming lots. Am I correct?
The designs should stay the same, right? The design standards.
Right, okay, so.
And that's where, to me, it got interesting and a few, couple of meetings ago, I mentioned something about the design police. Because, you know, when you start getting into the details of roof slopes and-
We have design police today. Because there, we do have, we do have subjective language in our ordinance already, but it deals mainly with accessory buildings. They have to be homogeneous or something like that.
Okay.
So I guess we get to be the design police.
Homogeneous to the house?
In appearance in the neighborhood or something like that. I forget the exact, subjective language, but, so are we all on the same page with that?
So what we're moving is, here's the definition of infill that applies to all infill, no matter what the size is, here's where you can put a small house.
Non-conforming lot.
That's what I've made the motion for.
Okay. Cool, all right.
And that includes the 500 square foot then? Okay.
Okay, so everybody who's in favor of the motion to send it back to the planning department, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carries.
End of report and end of 9B, sorry, yeah, 9B, 9A.
New business, which I think Jeff was already, Jeff and Kelly-
That was personnel signing.
That was, yeah, so that's done. Okay, public, time for public forum. Time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council, time limits may be imposed. I'll open the public hearing at 8:58. Anybody here for public forum? Last call, public forum. Close public forum at 8:58 and a half. Forty-eight. Forty-eight. What did I say? Oh, yeah, forty-eight, yeah. Okay, reports.
Thank you. If, before I start my report, I'm going to play a devil's advocate. I didn't ask it to be put on the agenda, but I got a phone call today and it, it- didn't ask it to be put on the agenda, but I got a phone call today and it, it actually involves the payment for rental units. If today had been the first of June, there wouldn't have been any problem because according to the resolution 4510, any registration payments received or postmarked after June 1st will be subject to unlicensed dwelling fees. I got a call from a gentleman today, said he didn't put the check in the mail, but he figured long as if it was checked in the mail, if he paid it today, because Sunday being, the first being on a Sunday, they wouldn't have received the check anyway. So he stopped in today to pay and he's got 19 units, I believe. The penalty on that for being a day late is about 500 bucks, which is what our resolution spells out. Well, if he had come in with a postal uniform on and went up to the engineering's office and laid a check there for this 19 units, there would have been no problems. Because the post, there, there, no way you could, City Hall wasn't open yesterday, but today is the second, which means now, according to this registration and payments received or postmarked after June 1st will be subject to unlicensed dwelling fees. I have mentioned, I think in years past, that sometimes there's difference between black and white and sometimes there's a gray. And to me, to penalize someone, he knew this, he knew when it was due, so I can't, I'm, I'm not excusing him, but I'm just saying that he figured that he could pay today because Sunday's a holiday or Sunday is a non-working day, work-wise. And most businesses that have holidays, which includes a lot of government in that, if there's a holiday or, or Sunday, they are allowed to, you know.
Even the IRS does.
That's what I'm saying.
If, if the 15th of April falls on a Sunday, you don't have to, you have to.
To pay it.
Yes.
And you can go in and pay it.
And the, on the taxes, real estate taxes, it's the same way. If your real estate taxes are, they're due a certain, the 15th of May, something like that. And if the 15th falls on a Sunday, you do have to.
Now, my understanding, this gentleman about four or five years ago, ended up being late, did pay the, the penalty, but I mean, if you got 19 units and it's $25 a unit and you got that many units, first off, I would have made damn sure that it'd been paid. But I, I'm, I'm just, I, I told the gentleman that I would bring his case before the council because the council does have the ability to make decisions. And sometimes I, I think that when you have someone that has the money is, is, figures he could pay it on the first working day, which was the second, and then again say, no, we can't take your check because you're, you're late. And I guess I'm, I'm just going to throw it out and, and let the council see what your thoughts are. But I mean, I, I guess personally, I think we should accept the money that he was having, the, the money that he was going to pay for all of those units and not penalize him.
Before I can go any further, I would like to know, because we could go broke here if, if there's a lot of fines, if we set a precedence and we waive this one, are we going to go back years and waive those or are we just doing a one time? And will those people in the past not like us for what we're doing here? I'm just scared because what if somebody came, 200 units and paid a, I don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm, the only thing I know about is that it, he figured that Sunday was closed, today is a Monday, and I mean, the Monday was the first day that, and, and I guess that's.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say one thing. I think city staff did the right thing.
Oh, yeah.
By following the rules. I think they absolutely did. And I think the mayor's doing the right thing by bringing it up in front of us.
One thing I noticed in the ordinance here, it does not talk about what Mary mentioned about holidays or Sundays, whenever, you know, the first falls on a non-business day.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering if, if somewhere down the line, we want to add that to it because it does.
I think we should.
It does seem to make sense.
You know, postmark, I, I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying which way I, I follow, but postmark is generally postmark. I mean, I just pulled up the IRS. I've never put in my taxes late, so I don't know, but it says if it's postmarked, you know, after the 15th, it's subject to fines. Whether they decide to waive those fines or not, that's up to the IRS, you know? That's kind, kind of the, the issue. I mean, I, I find it amazing that you've, that this individual's missed the deadline once and then cuts it this close. I mean, that's, but, but I could see the kind of logic figuring, instead of looking at the postmark, they're thinking, oh, they need to have it by this day and so it's all the same, but.
But in effect, you're saying he had to have had it in by 30th of May. That's what you would have been saying. I think we do need to change that if it is an ordinance. I think we should identify that if the date falls on a Saturday, I guess we'd better say Saturday because they're not open, Sunday or holiday, that it would be the next post.
I, I see what you're saying, Mary, but I don't think there's any individuals that don't realize that the post office is closed on Sunday, you know, which is why the IRS, it just says it's the 15th and that's the 15th, you know, whether that falls on, on a Sunday or not.
Oh, on a Sunday.
Because you, you go in on Saturday and you put it in, it's postmarked, it's postmarked before. That's, that's why they say before the 15th, not on the 15th.
When the way the post office is running now with the hours, I know that, I used to be able to get stuff to the post office, but if I got it by 3 o'clock there, it was on the first truck out. Now, you can wait until 4 o'clock in the afternoon because it, with the change and not being, running through the St. Cloud, St. Joseph automated service down there, it all goes directly to the cities. So if you put it in there on Saturday, it'd go down to the cities and I don't even know if it'd come back.
Mr. Chair, you know, that being said, that's not really the point. I mean, we don't know how long it's going to take the mail to be delivered. I mean, the reason they do a postmark is to have a date that, that they believe is universal and fair and everybody can understand, you know, so.
I'm not disagreeing.
Right.
Now, does it state honor before June 1st? So basically they're saying, please do it before.
Yeah, usually it'll say postmark by. I mean, if you look at the IRS, it'll say postmark by.
June 1st or, I don't know what the language is there, but generally, you know, I do a lot of contracts and everything else and I know that I've been, that I've got rejected and thrown out because, you know, you wait till that end and you just pay the fines.
Wouldn't we just say that the office needs to have the money, honor before June 1st?
And I think you have to revert it in trouble.
Yeah, because that way if you mail it and the letter gets lost or whatever, see that way if a letter does get lost and then it shows up, it has the postmark from when you brought it in, which is why they use postmarks in those situations rather than we need the money on that date. Because otherwise that'd be the perfect solution.
I wonder what the attorney has to say. I know that with the county real estate act, if the 15th falls on Sunday, you do, and they are merciful, but they can't, they can't control the calendar.
Weren't you on the county?
I was!
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I know all about it.
Well, I did want to, I did want to bring it to the council and I guess it's up to the council as to.
Mary's asked, so let's ask.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure I can exactly answer your question in that, about the county tax issue, but the court rules allow that extra day. So if your filing deadline is, you know, 60 days after an event and that date falls on a Sunday, you have until Monday. But that's, I mean, not binding on you at all? That's just.
I'll make a motion to waive, to waive the fee. Uh-oh, here we go. She can't make the motion.
If I can, the council should be aware that we had a lot of people come up today and paid their registration fees late and happily paid the late fee because they were aware that they missed it and they realized that they, you know, received the notifications in late April and that they haven't done anything for five weeks and, and came in late and, and paid their late fees. In addition, last year, we had the first on Saturday and Monday of last year, we had the exact same thing, people walking in on Mondays. So it's okay on Monday, is it okay on Tuesday? You know, how long are we going to, to waive these? So it's, you know, that, that, that's why, you know, staff just, you know, we, we just needs a, a cutoff. And, and we've got the language in the resolution, that's a cutoff, it's either late or it's not late and.
Resolution really is pretty clear. I'll read this. It says that the annual license fee established under section 425-1880 shall be $32 per rental dwelling unit and is due and payable no later than June 1 of each year. Registration and payments sent in the mail must be postmarked no later than June 1. Registration and payments received or postmarked after June 1 will be subject to unlicensed dwelling fees. Oh, me, it says that, so sad, but.
Subject, that means it, it's, could be discussed? It doesn't say definite. It's subject to. In other words, there's, there's wiggle room, I would say, of, of, of the one day. I, I, that's what I'm saying.
When it falls on Sunday.
When it falls on a Sunday. And if there were people that did pay the late fee, and I'm, I'm just trying to be nice to our taxpayers and the people that really do, we're representing the people that helped pay for all of these fees and all of this, you know, the stuff. And if we have people that came in today that did pay late fees, we could reimburse those because of the fact that it is, it fell on Sunday the first and we, they paid, they came in to pay it. I mean, if they came in tomorrow, then I would say, it's really late, you know, forget it. But, but today, and it's just my own, I'm just trying to be kind to some of these people.
If I can also add to what Mr. Parks read, there's extensions. If you're 31 to 60 days late, it's $75 per unit. If you're 60 to 120 days late, you're $150 per unit. So the council must have had some foresight and have dealt with this in the past. I mean, because 121 days, it's $150 a unit. I'm sorry, $450 a unit. So it's not the first time it sounds like the council's dealt with this.
I paid a penalty last year and it sounds like I'm going to be paying a penalty again because I forgot to.
I paid mine soon, I got it, but I'm.
I just think the Sunday thing is.
I think Scheeler should pay everybody's late fees.
I, I really do. He couldn't pay June 1st and he couldn't even pay May 30th, as for sure. So in effect, he or she had to have paid by May 30th.
Well, they could have sent him something in, through the mail, May.
Well, I don't know if they'd been postmarked Saturday, do they post?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Saturday, postmark.
I don't know. I don't know. The Sunday thing is, is honored, I think, in most other venues. I think April 15th came on a Sunday within the last very few years because I know our accountant told us, you have till Monday. You have till Monday, you, you have till Monday. And so I just think we should honor it for that reason. But if he went to court, we'd lose. He probably won't, but.
I think we'd win.
But I do think we should review that one and add the Sunday or holiday.
That could be a motion.
Right. I, I would agree with.
You want to make that motion?
It's a resolution.
Well, I'll make that one to begin with. That doesn't address this issue, but I will move that the ordinance be reviewed for consideration of identifying that if the due date falls on a Saturday or Sunday, the due date would then become the immediate Monday following.
You're just visiting it and that's still got to be voted on.
That's just a motion, I'm thinking.
There's a motion on the floor.
Oh, but it didn't get signed.
No, no.
This motion didn't get.
There's no motion.
Being that it's a resolution, Mr. Minister, is there a different process that needs to be taken?
A lot less strenuous than an ordinance.
So we have a, we have a motion to.
Mary made a motion?
I think Mr. Scheeler made one first.
We haven't asked for a second yet and he hasn't withdrawn yet.
Did you make a motion?
Well, since it didn't get a second.
My motion was to go ahead and waive the fees because of what the mayor had mentioned and I was waiting for a second.
But that's when Jeff jumped in and ruined it.
Well, why does the chairman want him? Be guided by what the chairman wants.
Look for a second.
Ask for a second of mine.
Yeah, I can ask for a second.
I'll second Mr. Scheeler's motion.
Okay.
Can I clarify?
Yes.
Ask for clarification. Are you asking for just this individual or for every individual including?
It would have to be all the individuals just for today.
Just for today.
Just for today.
And a one time. Including yourself, when you just said you didn't pay.
I didn't, I didn't pay today. I'm going to pay my penalty.
I'm sorry, what Eric?
I was just going to point out, he said he didn't pay today, so it wouldn't include himself.
I'm not part of this.
But he's, so he didn't pay, so he's due the late fee.
I'm doing the hundred and some dollar fee.
I'm just making sure we, it's not a, a question tomorrow about conflict.
Yep.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. No, there won't be no conflict. I'll, I'll wait till July.
I just want to be clear. I, I believe his motion is for anyone who paid today.
Yeah.
Right.
That's it.
And are those people going to be notified then? Or do they just have to be watching TV right now?
I might have paid.
Jeff, um, I guess based on that action, if it passes, we would do certified accounts for each, each of the overpayments and process the refunds of the overpayments through the next set of bills.
Put a cover letter in each one, set the council.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, that's.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye.
Aye.
Mary, you're going to make a motion?
Aye.
So it passes 5 to 2.
Okay, the other motion is to review the existing ordinance and to consider, to consider changing the language so that if June 1st falls on a Saturday or Sunday, that the time period is extended until the Monday immediately.
Okay.
Okay, um, is that to change, that's to make it into a resolution?
Modify this resolution?
Yeah.
What do we need to do to do that?
Part of the problem is, we have one copy of a resolution here tonight. It might be more appropriate to give us staff time to bring it back to council, so that we can, everybody can see what we're talking about. And you're just talking about modifying this resolution and we can do that.
Exactly, just that's all.
Because you've already taken the action to do the refund, so we have time.
That's all the motion would do, would be to refer it for additional.
For next year. Jeff?
Mr. President, if I can, for, for clarification and so that we all understand what happened here today, the party that came up with the 19 applications had one check already made out for $32 per unit, so did not have a check in the amount that was due with the late payment. So the check was not accepted and the party left with the applications and the payment. So they did not make payment today. So I'm taking by this action that if they come in tomorrow or whenever they come in, that we would accept just the, the $32 per unit payment without the late penalty?
That would be what I was requesting, yes.
Within, within what? Perhaps just tomorrow or?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. Whenever they come in is kind of an interesting question.
Yeah, that's a very interesting question, yes.
I got the guy's cell phone number. I'll call him tomorrow.
All right. But what about all the others, I think, or what, if there's somebody else tomorrow?
Yeah.
You tried to weigh one person, right? Well, we don't know who else didn't submit. We don't have that documentation because we don't have a thorough staff report to talk about it because it just came up as from the floor.
So.
I think the attempt was to waive the fees this year.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
If they pay.
Yeah.
Today or.
Are attempted to pay today. We're receiving council direction to waive the fine this year and so that we can bring it back. What do you, what are you saying, Eric?
That's why I asked my clarification question earlier. I believe the motion was just for who paid today.
Yeah.
So if someone did not pay and they're late and they come in tomorrow to pay, the fee would still apply.
Tomorrow, the fee applies.
With even this person that we talked about.
Oh, I guess he's got to give him here.
We didn't have enough information.
Thanks for the clarification, so, okay.
We didn't have enough information from the very beginning. I guess this was going. We're getting deeper every time we make a motion.
So Mary's motion, eh, motion is to review and allow staff to bring it back?
Exactly.
Thank you. Do you want us to look at other? Do you want us to look at other fees that might be out there too that have similar problems? I mean, I'd hate to do this several times each year.
If there are some.
Okay, I don't know if there are, but we'll talk about it at the staff level, see if there's something else out there. Maybe we can get Eric to give us some guidance that council could adopt a resolution saying, "If this problem occurs again unforeseen, we'll work on that." Thank you.
Just to clarify, the following Monday on your ordinance change or your... I think it should be the following business day?
That's good.
Just only because we don't know. Memorial may run.
Absolutely. Absolutely, right.
So, going back to the discussion of this individual who tried to pay today, according to the motion that we just passed, he would be out of luck.
No. My idea is the fact that he did bring in the payment.
Right, but I don't think that that was part of...
No, it wasn't part of the motion. The motion has already been passed.
So, in other words, he's going to have to pay the bounty if he pays them out?
According to the motion, unless there's another motion.
Unless the motion...
It would take a separate motion now for him to be waived because it was not part of the original motion that passed.
But that was the intent.
Somebody can make that motion.
Nobody told us. Well...
The mayor said that. Is that... I'm questioning if that was the intent.
The intent was for his to be waived because he did come in to pay it today along with the others who paid.
I'm going to retract my motion if you go the other way because now we're getting into a dangerous territory of me making a motion.
Sorry, the past.
That's why I can't... I'm not going to go there. I wish I would not make a motion.
No. We would... We either have that individual pay the penalty or we have to have a separate motion to include him in.
I will move that we allow this grace period because of the first falling on Sunday. That we will allow the grace period for the applicant whom the mayor brought...
Would you like to add something because he brought the check in and it was rejected?
Yeah, staff did see the check. Second.
Don't we have a motion in the second for Mary's issue already on the floor?
I thought we...
We didn't vote on it.
We didn't vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All those in favor of Mary's motion to send the resolution back to staff to look at changing the language so that it talks about Sunday and Saturday days that fall on the first? Say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Okay. Now, I'm sorry, now go back to Mary's motion.
Allow the grace period. That is being proposed for the person with whom our mayor spoke, who brought his check in today and who had it rejected, whose intent was to pay it today, so accept it on that print.
Can we have a name on that?
I don't know who.
We have a second.
His name is Ed. Can we go with a name on that? I mean, in that motion?
I will if I don't... I don't know who it is.
Ed Mattson.
Okay, to allow...
His actual name is Ted.
Okay. Do you want to say something? Okay.
That's good.
So, we...
Kelly's got the second.
I'll call him tonight.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, can I do my report?
No.
It's not often I get the chance to do something different except for giving my report, but wanted to... Just because we are so blessed to have rain and sunshine. My peonies down at Kiwanis Park are about this high. They are just loaded with buds. My dahlias at home that I have not been able to get down because the ground is so wet and we've had so much rain, but my dinner plate dahlias are about this high and hopefully, good Lord willing, tomorrow I'll be able to get about eight of those into the ground down there. And so, everything down at Kiwanis is starting to look good and I did lose my Irish sage or my Russian sage that died after seven years since I planted it, but my silver mound is coming back. So, things are looking up down there and anyway.
The mosquito crop is great.
Yeah, oh, they're hungry down there. I try to have as many people walking around by me as to help feed them, so anyway, I just thought I'd let you know that the flowers are starting to come forth down there and they should be blooming probably within the next week, so... Anyway, with that end of the recording, thank you for your consideration on this other interesting one, which I'll try not to get involved in again.
City Attorney, I understand you're going to take 20 minutes of our time?
Yes, if I may. I've been asked to do a little presentation on the open meeting law in the past here and in speaking with the city administrator, we decided that tonight would be a good night for that. I'll keep it brief, like you said, and I'd be happy to take some questions as well. Would you prefer, like, go up to the podium maybe? Like I said, I will try and be brief. This is a speech that I've given many times throughout the state. It's usually an hour long, so I'm definitely condensing it down for you folks because I know it's just a refresher. The open meeting law, it's always important to remember kind of what the purpose of that law is. There's any number of factual situations that come up under the law. I get questions on the open meeting law every week from a client somewhere dealing with some twist on the law, but when you look at the... How the courts have interpreted the law, they're always going back to these purposes. It's... The point is to prohibit actions being taken at a secret meeting where it's impossible for the public to become fully informed or to detect improper influences. It's to assure the public's right to be informed and then lastly, it's to afford the public an opportunity to present its views to the board. So, in essence, when you boil it down, it's to avoid secret meetings where business is happening that the public doesn't know about. So, you always kind of have to keep those things in mind when you're thinking, "Is this an open meeting law violation? Can I do this or not?" Those are the purposes that you go back to. The law applies to all meetings of the council and city commissions and any committees that have decision-making authority. And the definition of a meeting under the law is any of those gatherings where a quorum of that board is present. A quorum is a majority, more than half. Whenever there's a quorum present, the presumption is that it's a public meeting. That doesn't mean that it always is. There are circumstances that would not constitute a meeting even though the whole council might be present. For example, social gatherings where no city business is being conducted, that would not constitute a meeting under the law. We have, as you are aware from earlier this year, the statute's been amended over time to kind of take account new technology. They now allow for interactive technology to be used for a council member who's not present, who might be in Boston, for example, and still be able to take place in a meeting. There are specific rules that the law sets forth for what, you know, has to occur. We went through those very, very closely before that meeting earlier this year, but in general, the council member who's not there has to be able to see and hear everything going on here and vice versa. Members of the public need to be able to see and hear that council member as well. And as far as I understand, I actually was not at that special meeting, but everything worked fine, so... That's something that you couldn't do 15 years ago, though. Technology wasn't there for one, but the law wouldn't have allowed it either. Like I said, social gatherings or chance meetings, those types of things are not... Even though there's a quorum of the public body, they are not covered by the open meeting law. I always have to add the caveat that you can't then take the opportunity to start conducting public business because you're all together. You can't, you know, use that as a cover for conducting city business. The law does not expressly apply to telephone conversations or letters or correspondence between council members. However, courts have kind of cautioned public bodies that there can be situations that devolve into a serial meeting situation where council member A talks to council member B, who then talks to council member C, and eventually more than a quorum have been involved in this discussion and consensus has been built or decisions have been made about official action that's going to confront the council at a later date. That goes way back to the early 1980s in a often discussed case, the Moberg case. And like I said, the court said it does not apply to telephone conversations or letters and that would equally be my consideration for emails now, which were not, you know, in play in 1982. But again, the caution has always been there. Courts are always kind of careful to add in something about the serial meeting threat or the, you know, potential for violations to occur if you do kind of get into that serial meeting thing. With emails, it's often tricky because it's so easy to send an email to a group of people, a quorum included, and then to hit reply all, start discussing public business and right there you've potentially violated the open meeting law. So, what I've always cautioned and advised is that email can be used for informational purposes. It can be used for scheduling purposes. It can be used to convey information and to get out the council packets and things like that. But once discussion starts occurring between more than a quorum of council members over email, then we're in the risky area. We don't want to be doing that. The law does not prohibit council members from talking to each other outside of council meetings. In fact, in that Moberg case, the court noted that it is often the duty of public officials to persuade each other in an attempt to resolve issues and that there is a public benefit to this as long as that discussion is not designed to avoid public discussion altogether, to forge a majority in advance of public hearings on an issue or to hide improper influences such as personal or financial interest of a public official. So, the court kind of, in that case, really said, "It's okay to talk to each other. You just can't be doing it," again, going back to for purposes of avoiding an open One other thing I wanted to point out in terms of the technology, just this session, the legislature amended the open meeting law to include a provision dealing with the use of social media. They didn't define social media, so it's a little difficult to determine exactly what that is. I mean, I think we all have a concept of what social media is, but the statute that they added, 13D.065, says, "The use of social media by members of a public body does not violate this chapter so long as the social media use is limited to exchanges with all members of the general public." And then, interestingly, it says, "For purposes of this section, email is not considered a type of social media." So, I guess Twitter, message boards, that type of thing where the general public has access to it, they're saying that that would not be a violation of the open meeting law. So, I think it's an interesting twist on things and kind of an acknowledgement of the advancement of technology and where, you know, public discourse is at or headed or where it might be. Under the open meeting law, we have notice requirements, which I'm sure you're all aware of. We have a regular meeting schedule. Special meetings have to be posted three days' notice. There is also a provision for emergency meetings. I always caution people that there's hardly any emergency that can't be dealt with as a special meeting with three days' notice. Emergency meetings are extremely limited. They're really just situations where the public health and safety would be in jeopardy if you don't meet and take action, so it's very limited. I've not been to many emergency meetings in my life or heard of them even, so it's just something to keep in mind. And then, one other issue is with materials that are reviewed at a meeting. Data generally, council packets and things like that are available to the public. Anything that the council has at the meeting that helps them make decisions is something that's available to the public. However, if it's non-public data under the Data Practices Act, just because the council was... Had it and was considering it doesn't make it public then. It still retains its non-public status. Same thing with any confidential information. Any data relating to matters discussed at a closed meeting remains non-public information as well. So, if it's... If you have the authority to close the meeting to discuss it, the data would also be non-public. So, the law sets forth the particular authority for city councils to actually close meetings. And if you don't have... If you don't meet one of those statutory grounds for closing a meeting, you can't. Everything else is public. Everything is presumed public. You're probably aware of most of the reasons why you've closed. You've probably closed meetings for these reasons. It's for labor negotiations. A council can close a meeting to discuss strategy for labor negotiations. Closed meetings have to be tape recorded. In the case of labor negotiations, the tape has to be retained for two years after the contract is signed and the tape must be available to the public after all contracts have been settled for the current budget period. So, that one has a little different twist to it. A council can close a meeting to consider or give preliminary consideration of charges against an employee or someone under the council's authority. So, if we have an allegation against a city employee, we have authority to close a meeting to discuss that situation in closed setting. The purpose behind that, of course, being that at that stage, it's just an allegation. It'd be unfair to the employee to have it aired in public when it hasn't been substantiated yet at that point. Again, those meetings, although the law allows the council to close for those, the employee that is the subject of the allegation may choose to have it open. It's at their discretion. And then, once discipline is... Once it's determined by the council that discipline might be warranted, then all future meetings about that topic have to remain open. But once you've made your decision on that situation, further meetings stay open. You can't kind of continually close meetings to discuss the same situation. That closed meeting must also be tape recorded.
Mary?
Yeah.
On that, if you have, say, an employee that there's allegations made against, but in discussion in private, you find that there is no basis for that, you do not have to come public and state that this person or a person of... You would not want to name them anyway.
Correct.
It's... Matter's been discussed, found no allegations, matter is closed, ended discussion and it's sealed off as no...
That's correct. And there's, you know, there's a lot of interplay here between the open meeting law and the Data Practices Act as to, you know, public data versus non-public data. Generally, personnel data is private. The imposition of final discipline is one thing that becomes public. So, you know, if you do impose discipline, then that would become public, but otherwise, it's not public if there was no discipline imposed. The one thing that is public is the existence or status of a complaint. So, in your, you know, in this kind of hypothetical scenario we're talking about, all that would be public about that situation is that there was a complaint made, the city has looked into it and taken no further action, something along those lines. You wouldn't... You would not be able to disclose the nature of the allegation itself or any details about it if there was no discipline. Yeah.
What are the consequences for a council member to leave the room and just say, "I'm not going to hold this information and I'm going to tell the public"? What are the consequences?
Well, it'd be an improper release of government data, could be subject to a civil action, and there are penalties under the Data Practices Act for improper disclosure and there... The penalties are greater for intentional disclosure. So, in your scenario, presumably the council member has been advised that, you know, they are not to disclose confidential information.
Thank you.
Another ground for closing a meeting is when there's just discussion of certain data. These are pretty limited, you know, if you're talking about information relating... Identifying victims or reporters of criminal sexual conduct. You know, most of these things aren't going to come to the council, but if you are discussing these sensitive topics, the law does allow you to close, you know, things like internal affairs data relating to allegations of law enforcement misconduct, things like that. Another one is the attorney-client privilege. Councils have authority to close meetings to... Councils have authority to close meetings to get legal advice on pending or threatened litigation. So it is limited to pending or threatened litigation. You can't just close a meeting to ask general advice of your attorney. There has to actually be a claim pending or threatened. You can't just do it otherwise. The closing for an attorney-client privilege is the one meeting of these that does not need to be tape recorded, for obvious reasons, because it's, the information is privileged as it stands, so there need not be a recording of it. And then lastly, the other reason to close a meeting is for the acquisition or sale of real property. You can close to determine price of property that the city is either looking at buying or selling, can review appraisal data, you can develop or consider offers or counteroffers. Those are all valid reasons for closing a meeting, and I think, I think, again, the reason for that is self-explanatory. If you're bargaining for the best price for the city, it's awfully hard to do that if the landowner or potential buyer is able to hear your kind of bottom line, your thought process or strategy for negotiating. When you close a meeting, you have to, just one last point on the real property piece, they also have to be recorded and those have to be kept for eight years afterwards. And the actual action of either buying or selling property has to occur in open session. Can't take action while you're closed. You can discuss, you know, your options, but the actual agreement would have to be, come before the council at an open session.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
Taping, it's changing from the cassette to DVDs on up, and if you go on eight years, what if you can't take the tape and put it into something that doesn't exist?
Well, I haven't, I mean, your point is well-taken. I don't, you know, eight years is a long time, but I haven't ever had a situation where we couldn't...
Okay.
...play something. I mean, we had some old 8-track recordings. We'd probably have a hard time now, but I think we can still find cassette recorders to play, I guess. Yeah. But yeah, you're right. I mean, everything's moving to a digital recording system. It's much easier and better quality as well. When you close a meeting, you must, of course, state the grounds for why you're closing before going into closed session, you know, allowing you to close it. And then, no business can be conducted in the closed meeting. Must be conducted once the council reconvenes. So, other than, you know, with labor negotiations or the real property discussion, obviously there's a consensus in the closed session about, here's the direction we're giving staff to pursue, to negotiate, but the actual agreement itself or the final piece has to be in open, public session. And then lastly, the penalties for violations of the open meeting law, there are civil penalties not to exceed $300 for each violation, and they can be imposed on each person who violates. So it's not against the city in that case. It could be imposed against each individual council member. And that penalty cannot be paid by the municipality. So the city can't pay the $300 fine in that case. A member, a council member can be removed from the council if it's, they've been found to be involved in three separate actions concerning open meeting law violations. So it's three separate causes of action or, you know, three separate complaints against them that have been substantiated. And then...
If I throw that in there, somebody says, "I saw you with Chip three times."
No, no, it has to be three separate actions, meaning lawsuits.
Okay.
Three separate lawsuits where you're found to have violated. In addition, the court can award up to $13,000 in costs and attorney's fees to anyone who prevails on one of these claims. So that's generally the way you see these claims come about. It is, you know, brought by a member of the public or potentially a newspaper or, you know, other media that might bring these claims, and they can have their attorney's fees covered. That's about it. I end on the penalties to scare you just a little bit, but, you know, that's my general rundown of the open meeting law. If you have more questions, I'm happy to take them.
One more, on the closed meetings, must your attorney be present? Is that...
No. For the attorney-client privilege reason, I'd have to be here, obviously, but otherwise, no.
Okay.
You don't have to have an attorney present to justify closing on any of those other grounds.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Non-public, whether they're taped or if someone do the real estate, and you've got to keep it for eight years, does it ever become public after the transaction has been...
Yes.
finalized?
Yeah, good question. On the real estate piece in particular, the statute says that the recording becomes available to the public either after the purchase or sale, or the abandonment of the purchase or sale occurs.
Then my second part of that is if confidential information is received during that time, how does that, how is that kept separate if the tape is allowed to be heard and the transaction is either...
If there's confident, if there's data that would be considered or classified as confidential under the Data Practices Act, that would have to be redacted from the recording before providing...
Okay, so it never will always remain...
If it's classified as confidential, it's confidential.
Just one other question. I've gone to a lot of these at the League of Cities when they put them out. Another thing they've always emphasized, that if you do close a meeting, you've identified the reason for closing the meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Then you may talk about nothing else. Other subjects are not to be discussed within a closed meeting, except rather narrowly the subject for which the meeting was...
Correct.
...ramble off and say, "Well, you know..."
Just because you have grounds to close the meeting doesn't then give you kind of carte blanche to have your own other meeting.
That's something I think that sometimes we don't always remember, is that that's the only thing that can be discussed.
I just have several points to clarify based upon questions from the public and from some council members as we've gone through my several months here. And Eric pointed out quickly that it's committees that have decision-making ability. So when we talk about the Personnel and Finance or the Safety and Public Works Committee, those three members in each of those committees, that does not constitute a quorum of the city council, so they can meet without violating the open meeting law.
As long as they are not, do not, have not been delegated decision-making authority on an issue or are not, you know, conducting business in some other way, city business.
Correct. Also, liaison reports later on, we've got, we've listed the different liaisons that different council members are on, but in most cases, it's just one, maybe two council members on that. Because that, again, is not an open meeting law violation if one or two of those council members are there. But also, we talked about notification to the public. So let's say the Economic Development Authority has a meeting on June 9th at 8 o'clock, right? Kelly?
Yes.
And, but...
For example, yeah.
For example, legally, as there's only one or two city council members, I believe, Chip's on there, also at 8 o'clock on the 9th.
Thank you.
That is not an open meeting law violation if we don't post it. We are going to post it, but it's not a requirement of the open meeting law.
Correct. There's no harm in giving more notice or, you know, providing that information to the public.
Then last, hopefully lastly, some of the questions that come up, let's say, it is an airport committee talking about something, we do have a liaison there, maybe the issue rises to importance with three, four of the other city council members just happen to attend, that's going to be later reported on as maybe city council action because the city does own half the airport, it's a joint powers, but by accident or happenstance, there's five city council members there. What's your advice there?
I think my advice in that situation, because it is, as you've set up the scenario, because it would involve something that would potentially come before the city for decision-making authority or for action to be taken, I'd advise that not more than a quorum stay at that.
In other words, if three of them are okay...
If it hadn't been noticed.
Yeah, three are there, okay, but...
Correct. Less than a quorum.
And I only point that out because that's why at the end of a meeting, sometimes the public says, "Why do you adjourn to so many meetings?" Well, that's why, because a couple of weeks ago, we adjourned to a Wassa this, a Wassa that, there was a lot of public information going on. We wanted to make sure that the city council felt comfortable in attending that and that we were publicly noticing them. So I just...
Exactly.
Again, these are questions I'm receiving from the public and from council members, making sure we're doing it right, and we have been, so I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with that.
Yes.
I'll take the planning and zoning. And I sit out there, and I don't say anything, but I listen to, and there was a couple of us members, but I'm not participating in planning and zoning. It could be all of us there. Wouldn't that be okay? I mean, we're not...
If it's something, you know, I think if it's something that's going to come before the council for action, though, at a later date, I'd be a little concerned if we had more than a quorum present, regardless of whether you may decide not to speak at the, whatever it might be, public hearing or just meeting or not. I would advise, I guess, either noticing it ahead of time, which we're pretty good about doing, or not having more than a quorum there.
And my feeling from my end, because I'm not participating, is I'm getting the information firsthand, you know, that's going to be presented. I'm not, and instead of sitting at home watching it on TV, I sit here and watch it. But if I sat at home, then we're okay, but that's just because we're all here.
It's not necessarily a violation. I don't want to oversell that, but it's risky and I, you know, my advice would be not to do that. And the point being, if you have more than a quorum there, that quorum then later is going to be the ultimate decision-makers on the issue. So you're kind of, you're having that city council function occurring somewhat at least beforehand with, you know, a quorum of the council.
So then, would I interpret this correctly, that the three of us could meet anytime about anything because we are not a quorum, we're not a decision-making, is that right?
You can't, I'm not quite willing to go the whole way to say you can meet at any time about anything. You guys can meet and go out to dinner if you want. You can meet on issues, but not something that is, if you had, and I don't know, maybe I don't know enough of the history here, but if the, if your committee has been delegated powers or decision-making authority on some topic, you couldn't meet on that. Okay, you don't have any.
That I'm aware of.
Okay. Because everything that goes through committee comes to the full council for action.
Right.
If the committee decided to go out and look at, I don't know, there was that garage that was on the public right of way a couple of months ago, and if you guys had decided to go out as a group to look at that without publicly noticing it, technically, it would have been okay. It would have been better if we'd noticed it. It didn't happen, for example, but if it had, it wouldn't have been a violation of the open meeting law if it was just the three of them.
The only thing different about that...
Go ahead.
The only thing different about that scenario, and I might have to think about that some more, is that that committee ultimately sat as hearing the appeal on the case, and they did have authority to decide the appeal. Maybe I'm talking about a different case, but on a nuisance abatement case, for example...
No, not nuisance abatement, we're talking about a garage...
But in that, but that's one situation where the committee did have a role pursuant to city code as to hear the appeal from the property owner. And you did make a decision on that to, you know, deny or affirm the appeal. So that would be one scenario that, you know, you have been, I guess, delegated authority in that limited regard through the city code.
No, I was referencing a different one.
Okay, yeah. You're right then, in general.
Different property.
Yep.
I think, though, you have to avoid the perception of wrongdoing also. I'd be pretty uncomfortable if we started as committees, either committee, just meeting and, you know, discussing the issues and, because very often, committee recommendations aren't taken, not often by the council. So I think that you better err on the side of caution.
Absolutely.
So you're not going to join us for lunch?
No, I'm not.
Any other questions? I just one more question on Facebook, LinkedIn. You're saying that is, does not apply to any of this, but email do?
Well, yeah, I don't know. I mean, this, is it social media? Probably. I don't know, though. Because, and here's why, here's why I'm not willing to quite say that fits into social media, because if you remember that provision, that new provision says as long as the public has access, and on Facebook, for example... Closed group. It's your friends or, you know, I mean, there are different settings. You can have closed groups, you can post things that are just, you know, viewable by your friends, not the public. So that might be, you know...
It depends on your settings on your, on that account.
Yeah. So it does get, I don't think it's as cut and dry as a two-sentence statutory amendment here on social media.
Excellent.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
City Administrator. Can I ask one more question for an update on 28th Street? We got a letter, Mary didn't get...
Yeah. I provided the update during the committee, but the petition on 28th Street was submitted to the county the week before last, and I had some conversations with the county attorney last week, just generally about the process. And I was informed by him that he's taking it to the county board next Tuesday, June 10th, at their regular meeting, to, you know, notify them of the petition and the process that he's going to recommend that they follow. And then it was his intention, at least, you know, as of last week when I spoke to him, that he would ask the board to set a date for a time then for both parties to come and present, you know, the facts and their positions that the board would then decide upon.
And the council would have to adjourn to that meeting, basically, because of the open meeting law violation, if we wanted to hear...
If, I mean, if, to the, to which meeting? The county board meeting?
No, the one after.
Yeah, if more than a quorum was going to attend, I would recommend that.
Okay.
Although it would also be noticed by the county as a meeting.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else?
I just want to thank Tony for returning the lectern, but he'll give you an update on that detail of the report. That's all.
City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report this evening.
City Planner.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few items to report on. Since the interim use permit was approved for renew, I have not heard anything from the company regarding their decision to move forward or not. So I guess, I understand that the Wassa representative was on vacation last week, or out of the office anyway, so maybe that had something to do with it. But, so I have nothing to report on in one way or the other. It's been silent. Saturday morning, I think we had a pretty successful riverfront workshop. There were probably, besides the steering committee and the council members, there were probably 20 members of the public that were present, what I counted. And I think it was pretty successful in getting some more ideas from those that were in attendance. Council members Borkenhagen, Cole, Sheeler were there, Councilmember Parks was there, Councilmember Matt was there. So yeah, it was pretty good, pretty well attended by the council. And, excuse me, Mayor Wollin was there, I'm sorry, sir. So, anything else anybody else wants to add to that, you're certainly welcome.
Can we tell, we did adjourn to that meeting.
Yeah, we did. We did.
Yeah, you did, absolutely.
Okay, this for the public, now that we're a little more edgy on the speech.
You saw that the school district has taken bids on the Whittier School, and there's morning, there was a meeting to discuss the potential for a charter school. Maybe...
Mr. Bevins could jump in on that?
Yeah, maybe I will when it's other committee reports. This is Mr. Osgarden's time to steal my thunder.
I'm done with that one. Nothing more?
I kind of just like to jump in. I thought the meeting was really disappointing. Now, I think the time was for Saturday morning, and I do think it was a very poor time with Miracle Field in the afternoon opening. And although Brainerd didn't have high school graduation, many other area schools did have high school graduations, which is what we had to go to. And so I don't think it was a good choice, and I felt the, there were probably at least half of the people who were not council people and steering committee were not even in Brainerd residence. And I'm not saying we don't want to hear from them, but the handout we were given said to hear from the Brainerd residents. Said that in very plain English. And I talked with some of the people who were not Brainerd residents, and, you know, some of them think we should be like Chattanooga, Tennessee, and so on. So I... So I don't think, if we put a lot of stock into that kind of a meeting and what you hear from it, I'll simply make the point, you are not hearing from the Brainerd residents. You can't suggest that possibly 10 Brainerd people are the Brainerd residents. I think there's a lot of work to be done before we proceed on it. And I think if we don't do that, I think there will be some very difficult times ahead. So I didn't feel it was well attended at all, but I kind of think the timing was part of it.
I didn't say it was well attended.
No, you didn't.
Do you have anything else?
Can I jump in too, as long as Mary did? Because I felt also that the meeting could have been better attended. However, I'm learning that that's the way things typically go. And an interesting comment that I got that morning is, we've gotten this close place before. What's different this time? I wasn't sure I should even come today, because the city talks about doing something cool in the river, and then it just dies in the vine. But I thought today, maybe I could be a part of making it. And the comment I heard was, well, some people have said they almost don't care what we design into the river, what we build, as long as we do something. And that's part of the reason that some folks felt that it wasn't really well attended, because people don't care what we do. Let's do something. I don't think there's any issue that I have encountered more of since I've been on the city council than the river. And the city council's initiative with our comprehensive plan, that's probably the one thing that I hear people get more excited about than anything else.
Maybe Whittier.
I also heard on Saturday morning was confirmed through the second possible major financial assistance could partially be developing. I asked if I could just share that much information, just to let people know that there are, there's some major forces who are coming through the table here, because they feel that this is an important enough endeavor, put Brainerd on the map finally, and not pretend that it's still 1956. Thank you.
Mark, do you have anything else?
Yeah, did you all receive a copy of a letter from the Walkable Bikeable Committee regarding a request for a joint meeting between representatives of the council, the park board, and the Walkable Bikeable Committee? Did you get that?
I think we did.
No, it would have just gone out to you on Friday?
Oh, well, they did.
Okay, then I guess we didn't get it to you yet. We'll get that to you and bring it up then at the next meeting. Has to do with having a joint discussion about part of the council's strategic initiative, which is to discuss and try to find a permanent location for Skate Park. The questionnaire has gone out from the Walkable Bikeable Committee to the community residents. We sent out a thousand of them, and we'll hopefully be getting those back within seven to 10 days on a good return. And we'll also be setting it up on the website.
Were those sent out through Twitter also?
Wow, I don't know if we.
Because my son's.
Got that capability. I guess I can talk.
Well, my son had found one on Twitter from the city, but it didn't say where to send it.
Hashtag love Brainerd.
Yeah.
So I don't know where it came from.
Well, I don't know either, because we did set it up on Facebook, so. And finally, I thank the street department assistant engineer Freihammer for getting the Buffalo Hills Trail sign up, and also the Keanu Lakes Trail signs up. They look really cool. And those, again, were funded by the J.C.'s in the Run for the Lakes Marathon donations. And there might be some cool information coming up on the Run for the Lakes Marathon in the near future.
Thank you. Fire chief.
Speaking of signs, real quick, there's a sign at the bypass that says bypass. And one of the things that came up Saturday was, why can't that sign say historic Brainerd this way? Baxter.
Mark?
I've already, about a week or two, I sent an email to MINDOT asking them that question. We've got to get rid of that thing.
Good, good. Thank you. You mean, get rid of it legally, right?
I didn't say that, no, of course. End of report.
Fire chief.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. One quick thing, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the community for their huge effort. A couple of weeks ago, you probably noticed a lot of firefighters walking around by Walgreens, raising money for the muscular dystrophy event. We don't have the final tally, but I can tell you it's over $12,400. And I would just like to also thank fireman Kirk Dory for taking the lead in this the last three, four years. But over $12,000, that's a huge effort for three days, and we actually cut back on the hours that we've been doing in the past two or three years. So we cut back on hours and raised more money. So that was a huge effort. So again, thank you to the community and everybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a call from a constituent that asked me about this, if I may. Does our fire department do grass fires out in the rural area?
Yes, we do.
And the person said that that's under the DNR unless the DNR has commissioned a local fire department to do that. And I don't know anything about it. But if that's the case, have we been commissioned?
Yeah, we work with the DNR very closely. The DNR is stationed out of Aiken and Bacchus, and they have a couple of trucks in Brainerd, but most of their equipment is in Aiken and Bacchus. So anytime there's a wildland fire that's threatening structures or anything close, we respond along with the DNR.
And then do they pay us for?
We bill back to the DNR. We do get money reimbursed as a revenue from them, absolutely.
Thanks. That's what I think I needed to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sailor.
Mr. President, just to give a, as I usually do, a shout out to somebody. The Brainerd Quanis Club is re-shingling the roof. They started Friday at the pavilion at Quanis Park. And they're working with students from Brainerd High School to do so. And the material costs alone are $1,200. So a big thank to the Brainerd Quanis Club for that. Again, thank everyone for coming to the Miracle League grand opening. The clouds parted and the sun came out by the time Mr. Beckley stepped to the podium, lectern, whatever. And I have to say that when some of those disabled kids hit the ball and started going around the bases, those smiles were worth every ounce of energy that was put into this field. It was pretty heartwarming. So, big thanks to the community for all the support they've given us.
Big thanks to you, Tony. Big thanks to you.
And if I may follow up on that, I think Daris probably had the largest smile on his face he's ever had in his life. That was a dream of his, and the comments you made were, I mean, all of the comments you made, the people you thanked and every people that donated with, just outstanding. And to me, it was just an absolutely fabulous program, as well as what a beautiful addition to our city. I mean, somebody asked me, well, is it just for Brainerd? And I said, no, it includes the whole area. I mean, county and anybody that, you know, anybody that has need or wants that, you know, all they have to do is make arrangements and that. But that is, that is for people who have disabilities of some sort or another.
If I could ask, I know that the Parks Department has been looking for volunteers to help out. And I know there was a call out at Forest View. I was wondering if Mr. Parks could give that information now again? So anybody watching that'd be interested in helping out at Miracle Field would know where to go?
Mr. Sailor.
Mr. Sailor, I'm sorry. Mr. Parks.
From the Parks Department.
Dear Mr. Parks, you should switch departments.
We do have what's called a buddy system to assist the mentally and physically disabled to play the game. All of the Monday night slots are full.
That's good news.
Yes, that is the youngest group, the five to 11-year-olds. We are looking for help on the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday nights. And right now, at this point in time, we do not have any disabled vets signed up. I have been working with the Disabled American Veterans Organization, however, and they're going to be putting a big push on. If it doesn't start next week when it's scheduled, we will make sure that we have it happen. But the key is to have people come out to help the kids that will get around the bases, so the parents or the guardians can stay in the stands and enjoy the moment. And so that anybody can call the Parks and Recreation Department, and we can arrange, make any arrangements we want. We would prefer that it's usually about 10 people per group to help out.
Thank you. Anything else, Dad?
Yeah. The Parks and Recreation Department is hosting a free youth baseball clinic sponsored by the Minnesota Twins on June 28th at Bain Park. We will be getting information out on what age groups and all that. But a number of the Twins personnel will be up to teach that camp. We did that last August at Mills Field, and we had just a huge turnout. And we'll be doing so again at Bain Park on the 28th. Okay, that's it, Mr. President?
All right. I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to let you know that I did attend the Miracle League presentation, and I thought that Tony did an excellent job of putting everything together, putting a speech there. It was very heartwarming. Good job. And we did have, I think, same ones that went to the morning meeting, that Mr. Russo was also there. So we had a good turnout of the council, and we did notice it. I was also at the Mississippi River Project meeting, and I too was somewhat disappointed at the numbers. But, you know, it's tough on a Saturday morning to get people to come into something. But there were people there, and hopefully that the committee will get some benefit of the information. Also.
One of the agenda.
I also wanted to let you know that one of our strategic plans is to get neighborhoods more engaged. And I had a meeting last week with the police chief and Elizabeth Harris, if somebody remembers. And we talked about some of the things that we want to move along. Our next meeting, Mr. Osgarden is also going to attend, but right now, our thought is to, we have to take baby steps to revitalize the neighborhoods, but we're trying to make a conscientious and concerted effort to employ National Night Out. And we've had about three or four groups within the city of Brainerd that have been promoting National Night Out, and now we want to push it into other areas of the city. The idea being, if we could get people to come in, then maybe we could get new blood into those organizations and at least, you know, be a baby step. So, you know, I will keep you informed as to where we are with that. But it is the initiative and our strategic plan. Basically, the chief of police is supposed to be in charge of that, but we will have other people within the council and our staff involved with that too as we move along. I think our deadline is 2015, so we've got some time to do some planning. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that is also, that that's being done. Then one last thing is, the Mississippi River Project has had a number of council people attending, but we really haven't appointed a liaison. The assumed liaison is Chip, but he hasn't officially been appointed, so.
A move. Second.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What do you think, Chip now?
I think that's all the railroad guys. Shanghai.
These are our ad sales.
So with that being said.
If I, and I was just kind of glancing through my email, sometimes I get a message, you know, for whatever reason. And I got one from Mona Dolan. She is the, she's, they're friends of mine. We communicate once in a while. She was friends with Chief Walcott down the city. Anyway, she is commissioner of public safety, state of Minnesota. Her note is, mayor, I am just checking in to say hello. I am at Craigens for the sheriff's conference, doing a little work in my room. I'm watching your council meeting. I love listening to what towns across Minnesota are dealing with, and I hope that guy gets that house finished so he doesn't have to pay the fine. Anyway, I hope this finds you well and enjoying this. Mona. So Mona, if you're still up and you're still listening, thank you for the wonderful note. Anyway, but I had to share that, because I just thought that was cool. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, down to liaison reports. One of the things that we're, that we're going to be doing is to, we have a list of the liaison reports, and we're going to keep them on the agenda. And if you have a report, then this would be the time that you could do your liaison report. So with that being said.
I just have one question on this. You have 15 different listed here. And if you give each one of them four minutes, that's an extra hour to our council meeting. So I was wondering, I don't see the words, you know, time limit should be imposed.
10 seconds.
Maybe it should be, yeah.
Cable TV should be short.
Well, you make a good point, because some of these, some, if you have a lot to say, you could do, put it in writing.
If you've worked with Mary, you know.
I think you've talked twice as much as I have to.
History week isn't even on there.
So, with that being said, does anybody have any reports? Billy.
Thank you, and it's not on here. It's a Whittier School update, as Mr. Osgarden mentioned. Last week, if you read in the paper, the school board took bids on demolition, primarily with regard to removing the school, and there is asbestos abatement and other things involved with that. No idea how those came out, but they did get some bids, and the finance committee for the school board meets Thursday, and they'll look at the bids, and everybody will know, become public. In the meantime, looking, just a quick, brief looking back, if you remember, December 5th, the council authorized me to call a North, it was basically a Northside meeting. A lot of us were there because of, basically to answer the question, well, if not a zoning change that we had, that had been proposed, what would be the citizens, a lot of citizens had come here to speak, what would you want? If you don't want this, then what do you want? And we ranked their suggestions and passed them on to the school board. Really wasn't from the council as much as a democracy in action. And that brought about where we're at now. I had, as part of that, gone to a few places that I thought might be potential users for the school, one of them being the Montessori School, the Discovery Wood School down behind the old vets center and on the way, one of the ways in the Arboretum, and invited them to give their two cents regarding a use or their use for the school. At the time, for reasons unknown, it really wasn't. But in the interim, of course, we all read that there are bids being taken to demolish the school. And one of our planning and zoning members, Sarah Jean Hayden, called a couple of board members that she knew for the Montessori School and said, hey, are you interested in relooking at this? And, you know, you weren't in December, what about now? And two of the staff members met with myself and Sarah Jean Hayden and Earl Wollin from the school maintenance, and Alderman Shiner was also there. And those two persons said that it's quite possible that they would be interested. And one of the, I'm certainly not able to put words. would be interested, and one of the, I'm certainly not able to put words into their mouths, but they're, they're growing. And they're looking at potentially having outgrown their building, and certainly, a school, an unused school, might be a good bet. All of this is happening at the same time, there's a whole bunch of rules and regulations as to, as to what Montessori schools can and can't do, and ownership of buildings, and they've also got a board, and the finance committee for the school board meets. The suggestion was made that, you know, that I think the finance committee of, of the school board should, should, if you can at least tell them that there is an interest, so they know by Thursday, that would be, that was kind of the way it went. And then they went on a tour, and, and I stepped back, so I, I don't know the results of that, but it was very positive, it was very positive from Earl Wollin, he was very accommodating. I mean, there's been discussion that the schools compete, and I don't know where that came from, I've never heard anything like that from ISD one eight one, but I suppose there may be some of that, but it was, certainly wasn't there today. But I saw, Yara, I don't know if you did either, he seemed to be very, like I said, open and go through the school and, you know, look at what you'd like, and let me know when you're done. And so I don't know, Sarah stayed with the two representatives. I, I would presume, based on what I heard, that, that they, that they'll likely at least make an overture that they're interested, and maybe that will, and I don't know where the demolition is, so I don't know if that will, that's a school board issue still at this point. It's not something to come before us, but I want to make sure everybody stays in the loop. So, end of report.
Thank you.
Well done.
Dolly wasn't there.
If I may, I think that, you know, and I appreciate the fact that there might be an interest in it. To me, the last thing I'd like to see is that that building be torn down and not be utilized, because it is a neighborhood school, it, it has, if there is a use for it, let's use it for what it was there for. To me, it's a, it's, I mean, all my kids went through there, and, and many, many of the area kids have grown up and gone through there, and, and to me, to, to level that thing would be, well, like when they leveled the railroad yard here with the.
Deepo.
Deepo, thank you.
Any other?
And I just want to follow real quick up in Bevins, totally right, the school district was, and I was there before, but they were showing it, and they were very excited. I did not see any competition thing, so I have to hand it to the school for trying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any recommendations?
Not that, not that I know. I haven't seen anything come related.
Okay, well, it's just on the agenda, so I thought.
I know, no, thank you.
Okay, so we're down to number fifteen. Who wants to handle that?